We're now recording.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Happy Monday. Welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting. This is a special meeting of our group. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Madam Secretary, may I get a roll call of attendance, please?
Barahona?
Present.
Buenaventura?
Present.
Chen? Cisneros?
Here.
Good?
Here.
User?
Here.
Shelby?
Present.
Stevens?
Present.
Soel?
Present.
Stallings?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
Treo?
Present.
You have a quorum.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your availability today. Next up on our agenda is a call for public comments. State Bar staff will attempt to call members of the public in order that they appear in the attendee pool. For those of you participating via Zoom, you should have a function for virtually raising your hand. It is a hand icon. It should appear at the bottom center of your screen. If you wish to address the board, please click on the hand icon now and State Bar staff will call on you in the order that hands are raised. For those of you participating via phone, you may virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine. That is the star key, then number nine. And in doing so, we'll alert staff that you would like to make a comment. And State Bar staff will call on you and open your microphone so you can address the board. For those of you who are participating from a notice location, please alert the State Bar staff, member present in the room that that you would like to make comment. So due to time restrictions, we cannot allow more than three minutes for each speaker. So please note that staff will have an on-screen countdown timer visible to all attendees during the duration of your public comment. The timer's three-minute countdown will begin as soon as you start your comment. The on-screen timer will flash throughout the final 10 seconds. And move first to our members who signed up or individuals who signed up in advance. So Lucy, can you walk us through that?
Yes, the first individual and the only individual who signed up in advance is with the phone number ending in seven two one five, and I do see that person in attendance.
Right. So if you could please identify yourself for the record and then please address our board.
Your mic has been enabled. We just need to unmute in order to address the board.
All right, we still cannot hear you. All right, it looks like we're having some technical difficulties, so we'll come back to the phone number ending in seven two one five. Any other individuals who have signed up ahead of time?
Yes, we have not signed up in advance, but we do see Caroline Shining who has her hand raised and would like to address the board.
Okay, um, thank you, and my name is Carolyn Shining. I am an attorney licensed in California. I'm speaking on behalf of myself as an individual. And I thank the board for for being here and for allowing public comment. I know your time is valuable, and I'll try and keep my comments short. And I understand that today you will be considering the 2024-2025 budget. And I am concerned that the 2025 related issues with regard to the changes that are coming have not been allowed to be fully vetted and considered by practicing attorneys. There are, the word disruption is something that is used in the venture capital world to talk about changes that can be made to commercial environments for the benefit of consumers and members of the public. However, State Bar proposed changes in the past with regard to non-attorney ownership, sometimes called an alternative business structure, paraprofessionals and clinical paths to licensure, have generated thousands of critical comments that have, may or may not been considered in terms of the responses of the State Bar to those criticisms. I would urge the State Bar to give more time for consideration of these kinds of major disruptive proposals. Thirty days for the portfolio bar examination, for example, forty-five days for major programs such as the paraprofessionals. I think on a positive note, that kind of more time and full engagement with the practicing eternity community can result in positive coalitions that will result in real changes to help the consumers of California. I commend Leah Wilson for reaching out to local bar associations to try and make sure we can bridge those gaps and to really talk with practicing attorney communities in the coming year. And I just wish the board and I hope the board can take the time as it comes to the 2025 proposals that are currently being thought through and discussed, and as we study Arizona and Utah and Washington, to really help the bar associations who are boots on the ground for practicing attorneys who are involved in community legal services and support to give very considered thought to what those practicing attorneys can do to help support the missions of the State Bar. And with that, all my public comment, and thank you all again for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you for addressing our board. Madam Secretary.
We do have one additional person. This person's name is E six H U G W I. Your mic should be enabled, and you should be able to address the board.
Hi there. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, earlier I was calling from my phone. That was the seven two one five number. I'm also addressing the board in my individual capacity. My name is Candace Lee. Good morning, and I will also try and keep this succinct. I am told that the California State Bar is in the process of considering rule changes permitting retroactive expungement as administrative inactive enrollments. I'm calling to support such rule changes where an attorney was otherwise in compliance without licensing requirements, but did not submit the forms or pay the fees on time. I was on disability leave, and my company moved its physical office address, so I unfortunately never received notices reminding me to pay my dues and complete the related forms. Once I returned to work with a new employer, I went to update my State Bar profile and realizing the error, I immediately submitted my CTAP form and paid my dues, including a $500 late penalty fee. I was told that because I incurred inactive enrollment for CTAP non-compliance, in addition to failing to pay my dues, that I'm ineligible for expungement per California Rule Court, Section nine point A B four. Therefore, there's a mark on my record indicating that I was ineligible to practice law in 2023, and that that notation will stay on my record permanently. As the State Bar's mission is to protect the public and enhance the administration of justice, I would strongly posit that this rule does not serve this purpose if an attorney is otherwise in compliance with all licensing requirements. You know, for example, that attorney has not commingled fine. They satisfied their legal education requirements, which I have and had, other than, of course, the failure to pay the dues. And this will, however, greatly harm a professional's reputation while this notation appears on their bio permanently. In extenuating circumstances such as these, I respectfully ask the California State Bar to reconsider this policy and strongly support a change to the rule permitting expungement of administrative inactive enrollments.
All right, thank you for your comments. Madam Secretary.
Do not have any additional members of the of the public wishing to address the board.
All right, thank you, everyone, for your thoughts and for sharing them with us. We'll move next to Chair's report, which is item thirty. I'll keep it brief in the interest of all that we have going on today. Just that myself, Vice Chair Cisneros, have been very busy meeting with various stakeholders. I know members of staff, other trustees have also started this year off running as a work. And it's hard to believe that it's almost the end of February. We have a lot to accomplish this year and a lot to inform our various stakeholders about in today's meeting. So I look forward to the media discussion that we're going to be having with the three reports that we'll be releasing shortly. That concludes my brief remarks. We'll move on to, if everybody sure has probably picked this up, our consent agenda will be taken up after our item seven zero one and seven zero two, so stay tuned for that. But I do want to move on to seven zero one, which is approval of State Bar final 2024 budget pursuant to Business and Professions Code sixty-one forty dash, or excuse me, point one. And this is being presented by our Chief Financial Officer, Ariseli Montoya Chico. So welcome. Happy Monday.
Thank you. Happy Monday and good morning. I'm going to start with the presentation for approval of the State Bar budget for 2024. Hopefully, you guys all got to read the agenda, and within the agenda, it's the link to our brand-new format of the budget and and fully, and it's very interactive. So I'm going to be sharing my screen as I go through the budget. I'm not going to go through every single one of of the pages, if you will, of the online budget, but I will I will highlight the key pieces, and I'm going to follow the agenda item that was attached to this item, so please let me know once you see my screen.
We can see it ourselves.
Okay, great, thank you. So as I said, this is a brand-new format that we've done from prior years, prior years, so it's just, you know, normal PDF. This is a lot more interactive, so hopefully you guys have had, the board has had a bit of time to go through the various slides and links within. I will only highlight certain key pieces of the budget and scroll through some of the pages here. So first, I want to start off with our bar-wide budget results. And I'll start off with revenues followed by expenses, and then I'll be covering the general fund as well as the admissions fund, and then I'll go over the reserves and touch on the forecast, how to develop the forecast really quickly. So first, for revenue, our total bar-wide revenue is about just under $430 million. And I wanted to show the sources of funds, which obviously $430 million is a lot, but really, most of that is grant revenue. And all grant revenue and grant, really, all grant revenue is passed through, and it accounts for really most of our bar-wide revenue, almost just over 65%. And the next piece of, well, the next source of funds for revenue is the mandatory fees. So this is our revenue budget for 2024. You'll see that this year, in recommendation of the state auditor, we're doing a five-year budget, so you will see in all of your budget, or all of your budgets by fund, our 2023, which is prior year's budget, our current budget of 2024, and then three years worth of forecasts. So this is a new format that we will have, and it's a recommendation of the state auditor to have those additional forecasted years. Again, as I mentioned, about just under $430 million is our revenue. Most of that, of course, is grants at about 280, just just under 281 million, and the next piece, of course, is mandatory fees at 90, almost 98 million. And, yeah, sorry, I'm still trying to get used to this as well. So the next, I'm going to move over to the expense portion. Mark, you raised your hand.
Could I ask something on that slide you just had up, please?
Yes.
Um, so I understand why the 2024 total revenues has a bump, partly because of the sale of the building, okay? What I, and then in 2025, it's kind of more in line with a small increase from 2023. I'm looking at 2027, and it looks like the amount is lower. Is that just because of grants or? I mean, because, you know, the grants kind of throws things off, so is that it?
Yes, and it really is. If you look at the grants line, grants line, it goes from 280 million in 2024 to 196 million in '25, down to 186, and then down to 164 million. And a lot of that is driven by primarily the Legal Services Trust Fund IOTA, but we are expecting a decrease in grant revenues, and that really is the biggest piece that's driving the decrease in funds. And you'll see on the other side, on the expense side, you'll see an increase in expenses, also grant-related expenses in '25, and then it also decreases in '26.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and all grant revenue is passed through for the most part. Most of it gets passed through to our subrecipients.
Thank you.
Sure. So moving on to the
Ariseli Arnie, that is your double, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see Arnie.
Just real quick, Ariseli, one of the things that we've enjoyed is the interest rates being as high as they are and generating a fair amount of revenue for us. And how is that being modeled in the out years?
We, yes, you're right. You will you will see that better in the general fund. A lot of the revenues, a lot of the investment income is sitting in the revenue. That is our, in our other, in our other revenue categories that we have, you know, we have applied a 3% CPI increase to our revenue categories as well. It's hard to predict, you know, what the rates are going to be in 2027. We have seen 2023 perform really well. We anticipate 2024 rates to continue more or less in line, but I know the Fed is planning on decreasing the rate. What future years will look like exactly? You know, that's what we're, I don't know, but in terms of what we did in the forecast is we did apply the CPI increase also to the revenues that were not mandatory fees. Can I answer your question, Arnie? Okay, so.
Ariseli, are you okay taking questions as we go throughout?
Um, we, it would be, if I could get through, maybe the questions can come afterwards as we've normally done, but if that works for you, Brandon.
Yeah, if we could keep questions for the end, that'd be, that'd be great.
Okay, and I'll try to get through my sections quickly. So really, briefly, on the expense side, we're about 400, just under 401 million on the expenses. Again, if you look at the various expense components, grant drives most of those expenses. As Mark asked, our grant expenses are planning, there's a spike in 2024 and 2025. The Office of Access and Inclusion is planning on doing significant disbursements primarily from IOTA revenues that have been pretty, pretty significant and have exceeded our expectation. And then they, they kind of decreased the rest of 2025, excuse me, 2026 and 2027. The other piece that's also increasing is personnel costs. As you can see, it's increasing year over year. And that's really just due to our mandatory merit increases that those who qualify get, as well as COLA increases only through 2025. This budget bar-wide does not assume any COLA increases for 2026 and 2027, since we don't have a negotiated MOU in place for those years. So we, I'll talk about it a little bit in my forecast slide, but there is no assumption of COLA increases in later years. So now I want to move on to the general fund. Budget, and this is, I clicked it through the last page, if you will, slide ten, brings you up to the general, to the funds by budget. And I'll start with the general fund. So I'll focus, I know this is a lot of numbers, but I'll focus on the 2024 budget and then the forecast years. So on the general fund, as you can see, our revenue for 2024 is about 96 million, just over 96 million. Of course, most of that is composed by mandatory fees of about 87 million. Our expenses are close to 118 million. So that brings us to a deficit of about 22 million for 2024. On the revenue side, of course, there's the mandatory fee increases. I do want to point that for future years, you see, it doesn't increase all that much, and that's because we are seeing, or we budgeted not a significant growth in licensee counts, but we are doing an analysis, and I'll talk a little bit more about it to figure out what is our licensee growth going to look like, since for the general fund, really, that drives most of the revenue, as you can see. On the expenses, and of course, personal cost is our biggest expenditure. It's increasing, and it's really mainly due to our COLA, again, as I mentioned, our COLA, mandatory COLA that we have to do through 2025, our merit increases, and as well as 2024, we saw a significant increase in healthcare rates. So we're projecting that outwards as well. And within the budget, I highlighted that in the expenses, we also have about $7 million, just over $7 million of one-time investments that were incurring in 2024. So those are, you know, the LA elevator upgrade, the digitization as we, the station and San Francisco office space reduction that we have to move into later on this year. To name a few others, there's a five-year update on the radical disparity study, a five-year update on the Justice Gap, our phone system upgrade for the, for the, for the contact center and a few others that are mentioned, but in total, it's about $7 million of one-time expenses that are included in our 2024 budget. As you see in 2025 and 2020, 2025 through 2027, the deficit does increase, not significantly, but again, a lot of those one-time expenses kind of go away. Okay. So now I'm going to move really quick into the admissions fund that I want to highlight. I'll start with the revenue. So the admissions fund is another fund that we've historically have highlighted, and it's because they have experienced an ongoing structural deficit. As we recall, there was a lot of discussion last year and approval of to increase some of the admissions fees, so that certainly has helped close the admissions structural deficit spending. And in terms of revenues for 2024, admissions fund is about 20, just over 26 million dollars, which compared to 2023, as you can see, from 19, almost 20 million dollars to 26 million dollars. That's almost entirely really from the increase in all of the admissions programs that we were able to increase in 2023 that are effective in 2024. Now, in terms of expenses, they're budgeted at about 30, just under $31 million for admission expenses. So they have a deficit in 2024 of about just under 4 million, 3.8 million is the deficit spending for admissions. Obviously, for admissions, personnel cost is also the biggest component. You know, merit increases, COLAs, healthcare rates, that impacts every single fund across the bar, so that accounts for admissions' biggest expenses. You'll see the next, the next largest expense category is indirect costs. An indirect cost did increase from 2023 by almost 2.6 million dollars, and that's really a result of these one-time expenses. The admissions fund takes about, accounts for about 16, maybe 17% of the cost pool that gets allocated to indirect costs. And I highlighted in my agenda that, yes, this is a pretty significant increase, you know, usually hovered around seven, maybe seven and a half million dollars in direct costs. But one of the things that the board can consider, if, you know, we deem that this is just too much of a of an increase in expenses for admissions, is to use a portion of the building sale proceeds to pay for the exam-related expenses. And the bill, SB 40, that passed in October, allows for that, allows for the use of the net proceeds for to pay for the bar exam-related expenses if need be. So if that's something that the board wants to consider to reduce indirect costs, we can certainly do that at mid-year, but just something I wanted to highlight from my agenda item. Now I want to move into the reserves. As a reminder, the reserve policy that the board has set is for the funds to be between 17 and 30% of floors, a 17%, a ceiling of 13% of reserves. The ones that you see noted here as NA, those are, those are exempt from the reserve policy, and those are really all of the grant-related funds in the client security. So those are not exempt, sorry, those are exempt from the 17 and 17% and 30% policy. And the 17%, just as a reminder, equates to about two months, about two months' worth of expenditures. So first, as you see here, the general fund in terms of reserves is expected to end 2023 with close to $36 million, just over $36 million. And of course, that's mostly entirely due to the fact that we sold the San Francisco building. And we received about $30 million worth of net proceeds from that sale. So obviously, that bumped up our reserves significantly, and it's roughly around 36 million as of 2023. Now, we do have a deficit spending of 22 million in the general fund for 2024, so that leaves us at the end of 2024 with reserves of about just under 14 million. And in terms of that percentage level, that's almost 12%, which is still below the 17%. Obviously, 2025, we definitely are seeking and need a fee increase, or 2025 forecast, just for example, for the general fund is 24 million. So obviously, we don't have sufficient reserves to get through 2025. Now, the admissions fund, they're doing a lot better than they had the past couple of years. They actually ended with a pretty healthy reserve of about $7 million. They have a 2024 deficit spending of close to 3.8, so obviously, they have sufficient reserves to get through 2024. They are still below the 17%, but their forecast for at least 2025 is about 1.1 million, just over $1 million. So the reserves left as of, that we're projecting as of the end of 2024 will get them. It's anticipated that they will get through 2025 as well, but come 2026, there won't be sufficient reserves in the admissions fund. And admissions is still going through the process of doing additional cost cutting measures that will be brought forth later on this year. And I want to quickly go back to the forecast, highlight the forecast very briefly. So let me just page five. So as I mentioned, this is the first year that we had to do three years' worth of forecast per the state auditor's recommendation. So these are some of the assumptions. These are the assumptions that that we did on the revenue and or expense side. So for the for all of the non-personnel expense categories, we are applying a 3% CPI increase, and that's based on the latest CPI that we obtained for the San Francisco area as of the end of December. We do have a two-and-a-half COLA increase for only 2025. As I mentioned, there is no negotiated COLA for '26 or '27, so there is no COLA, there is no COLA factored into the personal cost for those years. We have flat staffing levels compared to 2024. 2024 has, I believe, about five new positions, but in future years, we remained, we budgeted or forecasted, I should say, for the same staffing levels. Obviously, we didn't budget for any fee increase, which is why you see the general fund forecast deficit increasing year over year. And then on the revenue side, we did increase mandatory fees by very little, it's only 0.3%. And again, that's that's something that we're in the process of analyzing, what is our future licensee growth going to be, since it's, at least in the general fund, the the main driver of our revenue. So, you know, we're not seeing a lot of growth, but we do need to analyze and see if 3% is reasonable, maybe it should be higher. In prior years, we had seen a little bit over 1%, but it is an analysis we're doing. And if if we need to make a recommendation to change the growth once we're done with our analysis, we will bring it back to the board, and we can do that change at the mid-year when we do the mid-year budget adjustment. So I think that's all for the budget. I can go back and take questions that the board has. Mark?
Thank you. So I'm looking at page fifty-three of the budget report, 2024 budget report. You had a slide up earlier that I think was the same thing. And it's the one that looks at the general fund, and it starts with the 2023 budget and ends with the 2027 forecast. Yeah.
Okay.
So on this, help me understand what the Okay, so our costs, well, let me just ask, tell me what building operations means.
Building operation, this is where our lease, where our lease sits, our lease expense sits, as long as, as well as any our security, any supplies we have. It's all building operations, but the biggest piece of this is our lease.
Okay, now, 2023 was the year that the building sold. So, what I'm trying to get, looking at this, is what's the difference in estimate? I don't need an exact number, but what's the range of the difference in our building operations post-sale versus pre-sale?
Total building operations or just the cost of either owning the building versus leasing the building?
Well, I figure that because of the way you describe building operations, things like security, and there's a bunch of stuff that's going to remain whether we own or lease. And so that's why I was just trying to say, is it a couple million, you think, around ballpark or more like?
Probably. Probably, Justin, maybe if you can pull it up really quick, I know, I know, Justin is the finance director and he's, I know he's watching this. Yeah, if, if I can say maybe around a million, so we have to consider, we still have LA, we still own LA and all of the building operations in LA is all, is 100% us. So if I say out of this, maybe a million would be a building operations, it would be mostly LA. San Francisco should have a very small portion now that we do not own the building.
Mark, if you want me, the building operations budget in 2022, before we sold the building or did anything was 7.8 million. And you'll see the spike in 2024 is largely due to the lease. We occupy a much larger footprint in the San Francisco building than we will in 2025. And once we downsize that, it's going to save about 1.7 million dollars, 1.8 million dollars, because we will downsize our footprint in San Francisco.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder. All right, that, that was it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Justin. Patricia, I believe Patricia had her hand.
Yeah, I had one question around the grant revenue. Does the, the grant revenue sort of a pass through in and out, but is there indirect cost allocated to that?
No, the grants are exempt from indirect cost allocation.
Due to statutory, like, is there, is there a rule?
There is a little bit of indirect cost, but not the large grant revenue. We kind of exempt the grant revenue itself. But the personnel costs that are associated with grant revenue, they do pay for things like H R I T finance and things of that nature. But it's much smaller than a percentage of their entire budget because most of their budget is grant revenue and that is exempt from the indirect cost model.
And it's exempt because we, we, it's required to be exempt?
It, it would really only impact the, the way we model our finances because finances is, is how big your, how large your budget is. And that's how we kind of allocate the finance and it wouldn't be fair in our model to allocate finance because there, there's so much more grant revenue, hundreds of millions of dollars compared to the rest of the thing. And I do believe, although I'm not an expert in this, that there are certain limits of personnel costs or administrative costs that are associated with grants that we have to abide by, that we do abide by. But that's another consideration that we take with the indirect cost model and administering grants.
Yep. What I was going to offer, Patty, is that for most of our grants, there are caps on how much we can assess for any administrative costs. And we do maximize what we charge off to the grants in accordance with those caps. I think that there is a little bit more flexibility with our main I O T funding, but I think it would be very politically challenging for us to all of a sudden start assessing an indirect cost allocation on the entire amount that is, you know, allocated out for grantees. But that's something we could bring back at a future board meeting, just more information on what the specific restrictions are for each of the grant sources that we administer.
Yeah, I mean, it's helpful to know you're maximizing and at the same time, other revenue is necessary into the future. And if, if we could look at that, I think that it would, it would be helpful. I don't think it solves the, the revenue challenge as a whole, but there may be other ways we can continue to maximize, I guess is where, where I'm going.
Thank you.
All right, trustee Huza.
Just a couple of questions. First of all, can you remind me, is the equipment cost increases as essentially the upgrade to the IT systems?
In the general fund, the equipment increase in 2024. Yes.
2027.
So, yes, starting from 2024 through 2027, we have just a standard CPI increase, but a lot of the equipment for IT does sit in the equipment line. I don't know, Justin, if you have a little bit more insight on that, but services and equipment is where IT heavily sits.
Yeah. But the increases to like 26 and 27 are purely the, the 3% CPI increase that we're talking about or for unanticipated increase.
Okay. And then for personnel costs, this assumes basically a flat headcount, but increases based on CPI and other factors that need to be included. Is that right? Or does this anticipate a larger headcount over the years?
It anticipates, anticipates a flat headcount. Just other increases to healthcare, like healthcare increased significantly this year. And so we kind of have a CPI increase on healthcare and CalPERS and things of that nature.
And then the merit increases, Mary, that we, that we know are, are, you know, we look at every single employee and those who haven't reached their salary cap. We do apply that merit increase.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, trustee Sewell.
Artis Selly, thanks for, for the presentation. I, I have about the two or three questions. My first one is when, with the discussion of the admissions fund and the, the deficit in the admissions fund, there's a recommendation, or I'm not sure if it's a recommendation, but a suggestion that, in the write-up, that the board might want to look at using the proceeds of the building to pay for that, that deficit. So that would come out of the general fund, that 11% plus reserve that we have there. Because that's not, that's not currently included in, that's not currently included in the, the deficit projections for the general fund. Is that correct?
You mean the admissions, the admissions piece? Correct. No, it's not. We put all of the, all of the sale proceeds into the general fund. So it would be, and it would, it wouldn't be for the entire deficit. It would only be that portion of expenses that are bar exam related expenses. So I mean, it is, it is a big chunk of the admissions fund, but some, some smaller portion of that could be paid with building proceeds. Just really, really to bring down the indirect cost increase, which is temporarily, it's just one year. If you see, if you see in future years, maybe if I can show really quick, in future years, we did redo the indirect cost with our smaller footprint. And as you can see here, you know, their, their forecast deficit does decrease. So really, this is just be a one time in 2024 that the board can consider doing so.
Just so I'm clear, Artis, because I see a bunch of numbers here and I'm probably not looking at the right, right, right place. How much would that be? If we, if, if we were to pay for that deficit out of the building proceeds?
So exam related expenses, we have 7.6 out of, well, the deficit is 3.8, but really the thought is here in the indirect cost, it went from about 7 point, and we don't true up. So one of the things that we historically do not do is true up indirect costs. We did do that, that exercise just to see how much indirect cost would have been if we did true it up. I mean, for admissions, they would have increased by about 600,000. So, you know, the, the change is still about $2 million of indirect costs. So we could consider maybe those two, paying $2 million of indirect costs or to offset the increase of indirect costs from the exam related expenses.
But, so that's a suggestion, but as I under, as I understand it, and as you, I think related, the admissions fund itself has enough of a reserve to cover this for now.
Correct. And, and as far as our forecast goes, they are good until 2026. They have sufficient reserves to get through, at least until 2026.
Got it. Got it. So, okay, thank you for that. My next question has to do with the analysis that you're doing on license fee revenues. What did we use? Because 0.3% is, is a very sort of small percent in terms of the, the license fee, the number of, I guess that's the number of licensees, is that, that, that are subject to the fee. Is that correct?
The, the growth in licensee counts, counts, I should say. We derive our revenue by, by forecasting what our attorney counts are going to be. And then apply the fee.
Right. So it's like, so it's a, would be a 0.3% increase in the number of licensees subject to the fee. All right. And his, his story, I know you're doing this analysis right now, but do you know what we, what we used last year?
Justin, you can correct me, but I think last year we did just over 1% growth in, in licensee, licensee counts.
Yeah, hi- historically, in the last couple of years, it's been between 1 and 1 and a half percent. But the analysis that we're doing is looking at the total population. And the population is aging and there's a greater number of attorneys that are turning 70 and over 70 inactives do not pay any fees whatsoever. And so larger populations are turning older and therefore falling out of the population that is actually paying fees. And so that's, the, the initial analysis showed that 0.3% was what we should be forecasting in the outer years because it does not look like the number of attorneys attending law school and coming into the population would offset those that are leaving the profession.
Understood what you just said. I, I think that this is probably a really pretty important conversation for us to have because I think it sort of feeds into probably the next item, which has to do with the reports that we have to submit to the, to the legislature and because that will, that's a discussion about what the, the fee amount or the fee increase amount is that we should be asking for. And if it's subject to a smaller percentage growth in licensees, that means that we'll probably be asking for a higher fee amount if the fee structure remains the same. And I know that there are in that item, there's some discussion about possibly using alternative fee structures to, to get it, you know, to, to change the fee structure to get at the, the licensee revenues. When do you think you're going to have the analysis actually done on, that you're, that you're currently undertaking?
We should have it done already by the end of this week. What, what I'm, I'm hoping the board will consider doing is adopting this budget as it is. You're right that the 2025 projection is kind of integral to the next agenda item, the conversation about the fee increase request. I think that the board can direct that we use a modified projection for the fee increase request purpose, understanding that then we would need to come at the mid-year and through a budget adjustment, align your adopted budget with the updated projection. But that way we can move forward today because this budget is due in two days. And reworking all of the numbers at this point would be quite challenging. But know that we will have the conversation, we will resolve the licensee count issue this week. And then we can, if needed, come back to the board and seek a budget amendment as appropriate.
Very, okay, very good. I, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. Definitely want to have, continue this, continue having that discussion. My last question has to do with just sort of all the other sort of mandatory fees. And Mr. Tony was, in, in, in previous sort of settings and, and meetings that we've had, those, all those other fees are now linked to a CPI. Is that, is that correct? So we've raised all the other fees and, which we've done. And now they're on a cyclical CPI increase, correct?
Correct. Yes. And I, I believe you're talking about the general fund program fees, or in the general fund, the program fees and, and, and obviously there's the admission program. So we also raised, yes, those are, those are being raised or will be raised every year, you know, per mark suggestion by the CPI. So the budget or forecast, I should say, does account for, for that.
All right. That's where I was going, just trying to make sure that that was in the forecast going forward.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all, all of the revenues are, are also increasing and, and we are applying the CPI.
Okay.
And Arti, I, just to clarify, there's one set of admissions fees that the board has not yet approved. This is on the admission side. Those are the fees associated with law school registration and accreditation. Those are going to be brought forward to you in March. And we have not been able to fully implement all of the admissions fee increases because a couple of them are dependent on Supreme Court approval. So on the admission side, although all of these fees are reflected in the budget projections, we are at different stages of actually being able to implement all the fee increases.
I'm good. I'm good with my line of questions. Thank you.
All right. Any follow-up questions based upon those topics? Any other comments or may I have a motion? Actually, thanks for putting that up, Luisa.
So say I'll move the budget.
Sorry, I'll second it.
All right. So first by vice chair, Cisneros, second by trustee Sewell. Luisa, can I have a roll call, please?
Barahona.
Hi.
Guana Ventura.
Hi.
Chen.
Hi.
Cisneros.
Hi.
Good.
Hi.
Huza.
Hi.
Shelby. Trustee Shelby.
Hi.
Thank you. Stevens.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Trejo.
I'm going to vote I, but I have to recuse myself from the, the budgets portion due to a personal non-financial interest.
Yeah. Stallings.
Hi.
12 eyes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Montoya Chico. We are going to be moving on now to item 702, which is our April legislative reports. This is pursuant to Business and Professions Code 608, 6.20 and 6145.1. State bar staff will be presenting on this. Lee, are you leading off?
Yeah, I'll lead us off and maybe Luisa, if you can put up the deck and I'm going to get things started and provide all of you with an overview of how we hope to proceed. There's a lot of material. You could go forward to the next slide, Luisa. So.
And then, then Leah, as far as questions, do you want trustees to ask as you go along or wait until, till the end?
Let me, let me speak to that in a minute, Brandon, what, what I think would work best. So what we're hoping to do today is to give you an overview of each of the three reports, basically where we are. And there, there are three or two reports depending on how you look at it. So this is going to be your first opportunity, for example, to get an update on the diversion report. It's also going to be your first opportunity to get an update on what we're calling the case processing standards report. This will be the second time you've had a fairly robust discussion about the fee increase request. But today we have numbers for you on the portion of that request that we're calling expanding our impact. So one goal of today's conversation is just to make sure that you're all, you know, feel comfortable with where we're going with respect to each of these three deliverables. I think with respect to the diversion program, you're going to be asked to provide a George with some direction vis a vis some options he's going to present to you. And then with respect to the fee increase request, we have teed up a number of decision points and, and policy issues. Again, not for you to vote on today, but for you to give staff direction as we work towards finalizing the report. So just wanted to provide that overall frame. So fee increase request, we're going to really spend the bulk of our time on that. As part of that, you're going to hear about the case processing standards report. And then there is the diversion report. We're actually going to start in somewhat reverse order. I'm going to turn things over to George now and he's going to walk you through the diversion report. The reason we're doing things in this order is the diversion report feeds into the related component of the fee increase request. So it's sort of foundational that you understand what we're putting forward as a diversion programming. So with respect to comments, I think, and questions, I think it makes sense. Any questions and comments related to George's presentation, they're made at that time. And then when we get into the fee increase deck, I, I think we could see how it goes, but it might make the most sense to take questions as they come up for that portion. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to George for diversion.
Luisa, can I share my screen so I can run the slideshow?
Luisa, can I share my screen so I can run the slideshow?
Um, I don't, uh, sure. Let me just send you this link, George. I, I mean, or, or you could just tell me to advance and I can advance.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Are you ready for me to advance?
Yeah.
Great.
So actually it wouldn't be that. It would be in the link, the, the link to the diversion program. Yeah. So it may be easier if you just let me run the slideshow off of my computer. I've got it on my computer.
Sure. No problem.
Okay. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. So, um, basically, um, here's where we are. Um, this is the statute SB forty. Basically as of January first, twenty twenty five, it does away with private approvals. So there will no longer be any private discipline. And in conjunction with that, we were ordered to submit by April twenty, April first of twenty twenty four, some recommendations for the legislature to codify a formal disciplinary pr- program. So at a previous meeting, we went over kind of where we are in terms of non-disciplinary outcomes and kind of diversionary approaches. So pre-complaint, we do referrals to mandatory fee arbitration where there are fee disputes in intake. When it came, when a complaint comes in, if it actually states a fee dispute, we can refer to mandatory fee arbitration. And if it's a request for a return of file or a request that the attorney start communicating, we can also effectively divert by giving a directional letter saying basically do this. And if you do, we'll get rid of the complaint. In investigation and charging, we can do the same things. And then we have other non-disciplinary resolutions, which are warning letters, which are basically, you know, look, we found substantial evidence that you might've done this, so please don't do it again. Admonition letters, essentially the same thing, or agreements in lieu of discipline where we actually enter into an agreement with them to do certain things in return for which we won't proceed with a disciplinary action. What we presented the last time was the addition of three additional diversion programs, um, for fee arbitration, the addition of a mediation component. Uh, to resolve fee disputes, to try and get those out of the disciplinary system, more of those out of the disciplinary system and resolve them through mediation. Public Trust Liaison, um, has proposed an attorney-client bridge program, which is a pre-complaint. So before someone files a complaint, um, if they have these types of file return or communication issues and they don't feel like filing a complaint and going into the disciplinary system, this would offer them an opportunity to resolve those more informally. And the hope again is to resolve some of these things informally and take those sys- those minor violations out of the disciplinary system. And then we in the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, effective last October, we began implementing a formal post-complaint diversion program. So after someone has filed a complaint and initiated the disciplinary process, a diversion program that takes minor violations by respondents who we believe don't pose a significant risk of harm out through effectively saying we won't proceed with the disciplinary proceeding if you will do the following things. And those following things can be any number of things. Um, you know, do alcohol treatment, do drug treatment, um, go to client trust accounting school, go to ethics school, refund this portion of fees, all those types of things or conditions we can set on the diversion. Our hope is, and from looking at a preliminary review of cases as we looked back over history, is that diversion ultimately, if fully implemented, could remove ten to twenty percent of disciplinary complaints at an earlier stage in the system than they otherwise would, hence saving us resources to allow us to use those resources to focus on the more serious cases. So that's the ultimate goal. Um, it would result in a system like this where we would have basically pre-complaint, um, diversion for fee disputes for file return and communication issues. Um, and then our post-complaint diversion, either in the intake stage or in the investigation and charging stages of our matters. We've now put, um, what we need on that, um, and you'll see the numbers when we get there. But basically, um, the Office of Professional Support has looked at what they would need, um, including potential amendments to the rules for that, for the mandatory fee arbitration program and the, the amount of money that they're looking for will be incorporated in the fee increase sides. Public Trust Liaison, we've currently loaned them a staff member from OCTC to begin initial implementation of their program. But ultimately they've identified their staffing need as three investigators and one PTR, which is a call center, um, person. Um, and again, those costs are in the fee increase slides. We've identified our needs at OCTC for full implementation. Uh, we're currently doing it with a part-time team consisting of two paralegals who we've assigned as part-time duty to do the monitoring. Ultimately, we would hope to have a team that would consist of one attorney, one investigator and two paralegals. And again, the costs for that are in the fee increase slides. So when we get to, so that's kind of the cost portion of diversion that will feed into the, um, fee increase slides. The second part is the actual diversion report. And what the diversion report calls for is recommendations for codification. In other words, what are we going to recommend to the legislature as to what they should put in a statute to implement a diversion program? Um, and so I just wanted to give this example. Um, this is the rule out of Illinois. Various jurisdictions have existing rules to govern diversion programs. There's also an ABA model rule. Most of them are similar in terms of their components, and that's all I'm trying to get you to look at here. There are typically a component that sets out eligibility requirements and typically sets a floor and says these types of offenses will not be eligible for diversion. In other words, they're too serious to be eligible for diversion. Other rules have requirements that lay out, um, what the diversion agreement should call for in terms of completion and/or what should be other terms of the diversion agreement. Um, and then there's often a, uh, statutory or rule-based language on what the effects of diversion are. In other words, what happens if you successfully complete diversion? What happens if you don't successfully complete diversion? So if you think about a rule or statute as having those three components, that'll then provide a basis for what we're here today seeking, which is some guidance um, from the board as to what you would be interested in in terms of recommendations. So for codification of a post-complaint diversion program, one option would be that they could simply pass a statute that says implement a formal diversion program and we're going to delegate to the board and OCTC authority to sort out those three components. That would be kind of the least restrictive statute that would give us the most flexibility as to how we set up that program. Option two would be to add to that direction, some definition of baseline exclusions from eligibility. In other words, recommend to the legislature that they set a ceiling of types of offenses that are eligible for diversion. In other words, define those types of offenses that the legislature does not want to be part of the diversion program. But other than that, leave it up to the board and OCTC to define the eligibility criteria and the procedures we're going to use. Option three would be more direction from the legislature defining what's excluded from eligibility, defining baseline requirements for procedures, and then above that, leaving discretion to us. So in terms of my thoughts, um, I don't think the legislature would be amenable to option one because it's basically just delegating everything to us. In terms of two and three, I think it's a choice for the board. Um, quite frankly, I could live with either as long as what was set were just baseline exclusions and baseline procedural requirements so that we would have flexibility outside those baselines to adjust both the eligibility criteria and the procedures. Um, as circumstances change, as we see different types of offenses being committed that we decide might warrant either inclusion or exclusion from diversion. Um, so that's basically the options on, um, codifying a diversion program. The second thing to think about stems from the concern that when we do diversion, it's non-public. So one of the general purposes of discipline is a general deterrence function, which is attorneys see us imposing discipline on one attorney for one particular offense. And as a result, they get general deterrents and that they see that and decide I don't want to engage in that type of conduct because I run the risk of discipline. With a diversionary program, we lose that impact because the diversion is non-public. So attorneys can't see what types of offenses are leading to non-disciplinary diversionary outcomes and so can't adjust their conduct to reflect the fact that we're actually taking action. Um, and that was recognized in this article. So again, in terms of kind of the transparency piece, um, do we want to propose modifications or a statutory authorization for disclosure of aggregate diversion information? And again, we can look at kind of three options. Option one would be nothing. In which case we would have to make decisions as to what we could disclose in accordance with existing statutes at the discretion of the board, bearing in mind that in general, um, under existing statutes, non-disciplinary outcomes are confidential. Option two would be for the legislature, um, to authorize disclosure of aggregate information about the types of conduct receiving diversion. In other words, for example, in twenty twenty three, we imposed diversion on two hundred attorneys who had failed to return files. It would be that type of aggregate reporting so that at least the type of conduct and the number of instances in which we granted, in which we went forward with diversion on that could be disclosed, but leave reporting to the discretion of the board as to when and how we would report it. And then option three is more legislative direction and control, authorized disclosure of the aggregate information, direct reporting through the ADR or otherwise, and then leave of additional disclosure and reporting to the discretion of the board. So again, kind of three options. Which vary in terms of what is left to the discretion of the board and OCTC and what is directed by the legislature. Um, so that's basically where we are looking for guidance and preparing the report, which will be coming back to you in March as to which of these options, um, the board prefers, thinks is better and/or anything else. Um, so with that, uh, that's where we come to questions. Would you like me to stop sharing so that everybody can see everybody?
You know, it might be helpful to have that first slide up, the first, um, area where you need a direction, just to refresh our recollection. And drive the discussion. And then on my screen, I'm, I can't see if someone has raised their hand. So
I can.
Okay. So George, if you could just go through
Sure.
who is raising their hand.
So I see a hand and the first hand I saw is trustee Huser.
Thank you. Um, that was a great presentation. Just my first question was on the costs. You indicate some additional staff needed for these particular diversion programs, but yet there would be a expected ten to twenty percent decrease in these cases that go longer and longer and longer. So presumably the net cost would be a savings over time. Is that correct? Am I thinking of that correctly?
You are thinking of that correctly, and you'll see that worked into the fee increase numbers. There's a note in the fee increase numbers indicating that the, so what the fee numbers are going to request overall is an overall increase in OCTC staffing to meet the case processing standards and reduce the backlog. Um, there's a note there that those numbers will have to be adjusted to account for the fact that if the diversion program is funded, we would hope to actually reduce the number of cases that proceed further through the disciplinary system.
Right. And one of the reasons we want to do this diversion program is we just are, there's such a constant backlog on these cases, right? They're very difficult to get through. And so it actually expedites other cases, other more severe cases as well. Is that right?
Um, so yes and no. So the types of cases that we divert, that the types of cases that we would be diverting are typically not the cases that take the longest period of time because they're more straightforward, simple cases in most instances. Um, but nevertheless, even a marginal decrease in the amount of resources we have to use for those cases frees those resources up to work on the longer, more complicated cases with the hope that that will decrease the time that those take.
Yeah. And I think that's a really, really important point that bodes in favor of giving maximum discretion. So now I'll turn to this question, which you have up on the screen, which is the options one, two, and three. You said you didn't think there was any hope of getting option one, which I thought was a terrific option. Um, but you know, because one of the things that I thought of is in even the most egregious types of cases, I mean, maybe not the absolute most egregious, but there's a big middle in there. You know, you want to have some discretion where, well, it falls into this category, but it would be perfect for a diversion kind of thing. So just my initial take on that is having more flexibility with professionals in the team, which would allow them not to say, well, this falls into this bucket, that falls into that, spend the time, you know, and all that. To me, option one, um, carried a lot more, um, uh, optionality there, which I think would be very effective. It means you have to trust the team. And so later on your second thing about the, you know, non, non-public, I think having some kind of report out would be important, especially if you allowed more optionality in the front part. But I would advocate for allowing more optionality to the teams on the ground who are dealing with this. And maybe have, if you have to have some baseline exclusions, that they be exceptionally narrow, um, so that there is more judgment. And then going to the issue of, you know, general deterrents and non-public, to extend you did any kind of a report out or that kind of thing, um, in the aggregate. I think that takes care of that. It's not a general deterrent to people if we can't get through the most severe and medium severe instances either. So I would align with taking these kind of simpler ones and having them go through quickly to allow more resources to be spent on the more difficult ones. That's just my feedback.
So the next question we had was from trustee Buena Ventura.
Yes, uh, thank you, George. Uh, I have two questions. Uh, the first one is, when diversion is, uh, going to be imposed and the terms of the diversion are, are being given? Is that something that is negotiated with respect to the terms? Or does OCTC basically said, say, this is what you have to do uh, to, to comply with diversion? Or is there a give and take between uh, the recipient of the diversion and OCTC in terms of negotiating what the proper programming should be? And then my second question is, and I just, I related back to my criminal experience. In, in the criminal cases, when diversion is granted, there's actually a record that diversion was granted. It doesn't really disclose what the terms are and things like that, but the fact that someone was placed on diversion, is that known to the general public? I understand if the version granted, then the case is closed and it's not filed, but is the fact that a person got diversion, is that known? Those are my questions. Thanks.
So I'll, I'll answer the second question first, which is, um, in the disciplinary system, the fact that a particular attorney is granted diversion is not publicly known. Um, because it's in the stage of the investigation before disciplinary charges have been filed. And at that stage, everything relating to the complaint and the resolution is non-public under existing statute. Um, with respect to your second question, how we handle um, diversion agreements varies depending upon the stage. So right now we are offering diversion agreements in intake, and that's before we've conducted a full investigation. And at that stage, we typically set the conditions and say, we're not going to negotiate because at that point we haven't done an investigation of the facts. And so we're not in a position to really negotiate the conditions of diversion. And typically those are the simplest cases and the ones where the condition is essentially, you know, return a file, communicate with them, something that we can resolve in intake. When we move to investigation, um, and we've done more investigation and we have a better understanding of what the facts actually are, if there's a dispute about them, um, then we typically will issue a diversion agreement with what we propose as the conditions. But in those instances, there can be some negotiation back and forth if they come back and say, look, you're saying this, but really it's this and this condition doesn't make any sense. Yes, we can have that conversation. Does that answer?
It does. Thank you, George.
Um, and the next question I had was from trustee Shelby.
Melanie, can you, uh, hear us? Hey, Melanie. Uh, you're still on mute. Oh, still on mute.
Still can't hear you.
Apologies for that. I, I, I'm on my phone. I don't have my laptop, so it's quite confusing though. But I do have, um, a question for you, George. As it relates to costs associated with each option, do the options have varying costs? I ask that because I know do the options have varying costs? I ask that because I know that they, well, maybe let me ask that question first. Do the different options have different costs?
I, I don't think the different options will have substantially different costs um in terms of assuming that the baseline exclusions from eligibility are not overly uh broad such that they unduly limit what we can do, they wouldn't vary the cost. In other words, the cost estimate that we've given for the post complaint diversion is based on the assumption that ultimately we would get to something near that at least ten percent of our our cases. Um, and assuming that the eligibility criteria aren't set to make that much smaller, which I don't think they would be, then I don't think the cost estimates would vary.
And that, thank you. And then my other question is, as it relates to staff costs and fees, how do um, how will any of the options be implemented if the corresponding fee increase is not granted?
If the corresponding fee increase is not granted, we would probably remain where we are with kind of our temporary part-time staffing for monitors. Um, there is a benefit to us of diversion. Um, so we would probably continue to administer the program as we are currently as a pilot and just continue that into the future.
Okay, thank you.
Well, George, I wanted to speak to some of the other components, not of the George.
Yeah, no, that's right.
Some of the others. So the fee increase request does include funding to support the expansion to uh of M F A to include mandatory fee or to include mediation. If it's not funded by the fee increase request, then you know, the board, we would have to consider, could we, could we fund it? Um, so this is something that is pending, getting the funding needed to uh implement that expansion. And the office of the public trust liaison um with existing staff could try to implement some version of this program, but certainly it is not going to have the scale or impact from a diversion numbers perspective that it would if it was actually funded.
So the next um trustee Shelby, does that? I think she said yes. Okay, uh, so trustee Tony and then trustee Trejo.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this presentation, George. It's a, I like the clarity of the questions that you put in front of us and the options. What, if we can take a step back, tell me what the difference is. This says direct establishment of a diversion program. But then I thought I also heard you say we kind of already have one. Wh-what's the difference between what this is and what we have now, just briefly, please?
So um, we basically on our own put in place a diversion program, um, basically seeing that the legislate, seeing the writing on the wall that this was something that interested the legislature and also seeing that it was something that could um benefit our handling of cases and hopefully um if it's in place, speed up our case processing um times and decrease the backlog. So we put it in place voluntarily um before the legislature or while the legislature was still considering S B forty and the uh kind of reports and direction.
Great.
So directing the establishment would simply be that there would now be a statute on the books, basically from the legislature giving direction that they are directing us to maintain the formal diversion program.
Got it. So it's almost like a formalization of the diversion program.
Correct.
Okay, that's cool. Um, so, um, I, the, a, a couple of comments. I'm um, I like option number two. What I would like to see is that the, maybe this is in in preparation for for March uh meeting. I think the board should um recommend what we think the baseline exclusions are. Um, and um, and what the list are, what the parameters are, and not just leave it completely open to the legislature. I think that we should come up. And so I'd love to see your recommendations um at that point or whenever you feel is appropriate to share with us in advance of of the March meeting. That, so that's a recommendation um I have. I, I, I will say that this confidentiality is an interesting thing. Um, you know, I, I don't know, I, 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 I'm not of the opinion that um releasing aggregate reports is a violation of confidentiality. Um, you know, you can take confidentiality to the extreme and say, well, it's so confidential, we can't even say we got the program. Okay, the program doesn't exist, or we can't talk about it because it's confidential. I really think confidentiality is a feature of individuals and not that you have a program and that you can't report how many people were in it. Because one of the questions that may come, for instance, is, well, how many people currently uh, uh, um, ha- have been referred to diversion? And what's your goal if we get the funding? I think we have to be able to answer that, you know? Our goal would be X number to go into diversion, and then the they're gonna want to report, you know, okay, your goal was this, and the, the year after, how close did you come to the goal? How's it going? Is it worth the money? So I, 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 I don't really think that you violate confidentiality by just being able to say very broad strokes. So those are my thoughts.
Uh, agree with that, and and we've never taken the position that aggregate data is um something that the confidentialized statutes apply to. Indeed, we report a a volume of aggregate data in the A D R and and other places on our website elsewhere. Um, it would be basically just giving this, including in a, in the proposal for the statute, a specific direction that we report that type of aggregate data. Um, so uh, trustee, oh, and uh it is my expectation, uh, if the general direction is that it's either option one or two, we would come back in March with suggestions for what should be proposed for the baseline parameters for option two.
Great, thank you.
Um, trustee Trejo, um.
Yeah, George, I switched my settings so I can now see, so I'll uh kind of take that back over. Um, I will just say.
Absolutely.
Yep. If there's, you know, if there's any questions specifically to um, you know, this guidance, the guidance that George needs on this specific point, let's do that. Um, and if I could also get an indication just from the trustee on which way they're leaning, so we can kind of see if we're looking at one, two, or three, and then kind of direct discussion that way. So uh trustee Trejo.
Thanks. Uh, and and sorry, I just, um, one of the disadvantages of speaking this way on is that I feel like a lot of points have already been made, but I just want to, one of the things that I do want to address. Um, I think this is a great idea. I think that this would be a way to hopefully offset some of the the, the backlog. But I do think that um how you roll it out, right, and how you think about how this is instituted over a period of time is important, which now goes into the idea of baselines and requirements and these types of things. Um, I just want to make sure that you know, we, that, that if we do go this way, that we set it up for success and make sure that we also are able to see the impact that it has on alleviating our current backlog and assuring hopefully that the creation of this new, this diversion component doesn't create a backlog within the diversion component. Right? So I think that how we, that once we, we, once we have agreed to what this product is going to look like, how we roll it out and how we measure our success is going to be critically important. And I, and and I'm for the idea of creating these baselines and requirements to to allow that to happen. So that's, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Solow.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, right, right off the bat, I, I think I'm leaning towards option two um, uh, to respond to uh to your direction, Brandon. Um, George, a couple of of questions for you. Um, in your response to Mr. Tony, you indicated that we do have uh a, a pilot diversion program right now. Can you compare that program in terms of its staffing to what it is that you're proposing uh right now? Because there could be some, I don't know, uh, some retort that, well, you're doing, you're doing this now. Uh, so why do you need additional sort of team members to uh to execute?
Yeah, so, so right now, the only staff that we have designated as assigned to the diversion program is two paralegals. We're doing this part-time as an extra duty over and above their normal duties to basically serve as monitors. Um, the rest of the program, we don't have anybody specifically assigned. In other words, we've set up um criteria and other things, but we don't have, for an example, either an attorney or an investigator who is assigned full-time to work with the program, make sure that everything is being um done in accordance to the tracking, the monitoring, oversee that, engage in the types of negotiations that were thought of and oversee those and try and maintain consistency across the program. To the extent we're doing that, we're doing that with um kind of, again, part-time assignments from people who are already doing all kinds of other things. Um, so that's basically the main difference. Um, the staffing that we're asked for, the two paralegals, the one investigator and the attorney would be assigned basically to work diversion full-time in the hopes of speeding the process, avoiding what um trustee Trejo is, has referenced, avoiding diversion cases themselves getting delayed or unduly uh backlogged. Um, so that's the difference.
Very good. Um, and we, have we talked to the legislature, George, you uh in, in uh, I think your presentation, you indicated that uh some of the, the piloting of this was in anticipation that the legislature was actually looking for, would be looking for something like this. And have we had any discussion with them of um as it relates to the, the results of uh of how things have worked thus far?
Um, we haven't, but that'll be included in, in the March report. We do have some limited data as to how the diverse, some limited statistical data about the diversion program. Um, we haven't had it running for long enough to kind of track outcomes um or things like that, but we do have numbers on the types of cases and the numbers of cases that we've put through the diversion program.
Got it. And so all the formalization that you're talking about in terms of the establishment, that would just all be done via the fee bill, correct?
The formalization of the program would be through this diversion report, which is a separate report that the legislature asked for, and it would be recommendations to the legislature, and the legislature would then at some point, depending on their reaction to the recommendations, presumably propose and implement a statute that would then formalize the program.
Got it. Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Right, thank you. I see someone over in uh San Francisco.
Yes, um, hi, um. So I just wanted to say I echo trustee Huser's comments about option one being kind of the most desirable in terms of there being um tons of flexibility um to O C T C and to us to consider individual facts and and circumstances, but recognizing that that's a non-starter, you know, I support option two. And to Mr. Tony's uh point, I had the same question, and so that was answered appropriately that George, you and your office are coming up with proposals around what the baseline exclusions from eligibility should be. So for me, option two, I think is the clear winner here, and also on the second part as well. I support um reporting out in an aggregate fashion what the diversion program is dealing with for two reasons. One is maybe there's some deterrent value, uh, but two is just sort of increased transparency, which is what the bar is all about. And so I, I favor that um as well. So thank you.
I think you, trustee, good. George, I just had a, a question about difference between option two and option three, and I know sometimes in the practice of law, if we have certain rules codified, uh, then it helps um down the line as far as the prosecutor who's reviewing whether or not um you know, proper procedures are, you know, have been filed, whether um, you know, we have those baseline requirements that we can now then take and fairly and equitably um apply to whatever cases is at hand. Would you like to have more direction? Um, if we went with option three, and do you think that would kind of got aid in um us being able to adhere to some of these larger, you know, act, you know, fairness and equity type principles we've talked about, especially with the Farkas uh study, um, or would it be more of a hindrance?
Um, I mean, my, my preference would be for option two um as opposed to option three. I think the board and O C T C can um work with um procedures to come up with procedures that are, are fair and equitable. Um, and in part, it gives us then the flexibility to respond as appropriate if in fact we see something like the Farkas report that suggests we should change procedures or do something with the procedures. So my preference would be, I, I don't think there's a problem with setting baseline exclusions from eligibility, and I can easily come up with some recommendations as to what those are. My personal preference would be to leave the procedures more flexible so that we have the uh ability to adjust those as things like staffing, types of offenses, other things change so that we have the flexibility to keep the diversion program moving as all of those things may change in the future.
Yeah, great, thank you. All right, so just kind of a taking a temperature of the room. It seems like option two has a s- a significant majority, or at least a it seems like there's a majority that supports option two. Uh, does anybody wish to be heard either as to option one or option three? Reserving consensus, option two is how we'd like to proceed.
My preference is. That is my guidance in preparing the draft report for March.
Got it. All right, and then down to the reporting out, um, again, it looked like um, option two seems to be the preference. Anybody have any strong feelings, one way or the other, about option one or option three? Correct me if I'm wrong again, if option two is not what the preference is. Speak now. Okay, it looks like option, oh, sorry, trustee Tony? Oh, you're on mute there. But you're still on mute.
Okay, all right.
There you go.
Um, for now, I just reserve the right to think about this more. Okay, that's all I'm saying. For now, okay, but please, it, it's still, it's still new to me. I'm still learning it. So for now, I'm good, but I reserve the right to like, keep thinking about it.
Absolutely. I think that's what uh everybody will continue to do until we receive our final report. All right, George, is that the guidance you need then on these two items?
That is the guidance I need. I'm going to stop sharing and return it back to Louisa.
All right, perfect. I would recommend that we uh take a short bio break. If I, if we bring everybody back eleven forty, does that work for everybody?
Trustee Parahona had, had their hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Barahona.
Yeah, chair salings, apologies. Um, just really quickly, if there is a net cost um savings over time, I assume, George, that will be made explicit. And my question is, um, will that detract in any way from the fee increase?
Your, your team has that perfectly for our next conversation.
Okay.
If you want me to hold it.
Yeah, I think that will be addressed as we discuss what we're proposing in terms of O C T C staffing increases as part of the fee increase.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great question. Let's uh put a pin in that. We'll come back at eleven forty uh for the next uh series of reports. So you get to see you guys in about eight minutes. Right. Looks like we have a couple of trustees still filtering in. All right. Looks like we have close to everybody here, so Luisa, are we recording?
Yes, we are.
All right. All right, call the meeting back to order. And if we could go on to our next uh portion of this agenda item, please.
Sure, Luisa, can you put up the uh? Busby? So we are going to move into the fee increase request discussion, and as a subcomponent of that, we will give you an overview of the case processing standards report. I am going to turn things over to Araceli to walk you through sustaining core operations. That's the first of two components of the fee increase request. Basically, what do we need to just keep the lights on? And Araceli, in her presentation, is really just going to focus on what's changed since you last seen that. And then I will take over and go um go over the expanding impact areas. So Luisa, you can advance the slide and Araceli, take it away.
Sure. Thanks, Leah. Um, so I'm just gonna I I hear a neck on. Um, I'm just gonna go through the next uh few slides really quickly, just kind of as a reminder of of the different fee increase requests we've discussed over time. So in June twenty twenty-three, uh, we came up with a seventy-seven per active uh licensee fee increased. Um, you can move to the next one, um, Luisa. And then in August, we came back and discussed, and this is actually what we presented to the legislature, and what we shared with them was an eighty-two dollar um per active licensee fee increased. Hopefully, we everyone recalls, we we had discussions over and then keep going, Luisa. Um, and then this this slide was literally what I presented in uh the January board meeting, kind of where we were with the adjusted budget and where we were going to be with the projection. So at that point in time, the fee had then increased to a hundred uh at three dollars uh from the seventy-seven in June and then the eighty-two in August. Um, and then one more reset, please. And then this is where we are today. So as of today, um, our fee increase actually has changed to a hundred and fourteen dollars just for core operations um based on the twenty twenty-five budget. So I just wanted to highlight really quick. Um, obviously, the twenty twenty-five forecast is based off of our twenty twenty-four budget. Um, the adjusted budget column that you see here, it's very similar to what it was in January, except that um deficit is slightly smaller. Um, and then our twenty twenty-five projections, which I the biggest driver of the change really is the change in licensee counts that I highlighted in my presentation. Um, our revenue really is not increasing based on those, uh not increasing significantly um based on those change in attorney counts. Um, and also in twenty twenty-five, we lose the um like special, the five-dollar special IT assessment fee. So our revenue really stays almost consistent from twenty twenty-four. Um, and the expenses obviously continue going up. So now our deficit, which used to be twenty-two, uh when I presented it in January, is now twenty-four. Um, so that drives a hundred and fourteen dollar um for active license fee increase fee we need just for core operations.
And I'm just gonna um explain quickly our um uh Office of Research and Statistics generates our licensee projections that we use, and they give three different uh scenarios that we can choose from. In I am developing the twenty twenty-five budget and pro- projection that you saw today, we used the most conservative number, and that was a change from what was included uh in the draft budget that was presented to you in January. Um, and so it turned out the number that was used in January was too aggressive. It was kind of an error on on our part. But now we've picked a very conservative number. So as we've uh talked about in the in the previous item, there's more work to do to pick the land in the right place on this issue because um I'm not convinced that using the most conservative number is appropriate, right? Because we don't want to have folks call into question um you know, the number that we're using to base our twenty twenty-five revenue projection on. But that is why we've gone from a hundred and three in January to a hundred and fourteen today. Any questions on that piece before I move into expanding growth? Expanding our impact. No? Yes, trustee Sol.
Leah, one of the things, um, and maybe it's the next slide, sustaining core operations.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Lou. Um, I I jumping ahead. Araceli, why don't you go to the next one? I skipped, sorry.
Yes. So this um, this is a hundred and fourteen dollars uh broken out by for a cooperation, uh car operating needs uh broken down by the same components that we have presented previously and that we presented with the legislature. Um, so these are the four categories, if you will, or the four the four buckets that we've kind of put the hundred and fourteen dollar fee increase to. Um, and if you see, it's primarily to um address the contractual obligations for our personnel costs. Um, obviously, compared to June twenty twenty-three and even August twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five is almost two years more worth of of get in projections. So yes, our personnel costs are increasing, and such this number uh increased to thirty-nine dollars of the total one hundred and fourteen. Um, the lease component, uh, it kind of went back to it. It was in twenty twenty, sorry, what it was in June twenty twenty-one. Uh, so now we though we sold the building or or incurring the cost of leasing it. Um, and that went back up to twenty-one dollars. Um, and then the P T N sick leave accruals, we had historically that budgeted um them, but now that we really have depleting reserves in the general fund, um, those are expenses that are always, we were always booking them just that year, and so that's when the expense hit. Now we're budgeting them so that they're in line and and when you see your budget to actuals, that the expenses there, it's something that the state bar is absolutely a hundred percent on the hook for. So there's the fourteen dollar increase, which obviously goes up as their personal costs go up. And then really the forty dollars, which is pretty significant, as you can see, is the structural deficit portion. Um, we started in June with the twenty-four dollars, which is what the state auditor recommended. Um, when they said we needed a fee increase and they recommended twenty-four dollars. Well, obviously, our deficit has increased, and now we're at forty dollars. Um, so those are the kind of the four components that makes up our hundred and fourteen, and we wanted to keep them aligned with what we had shared with legislature in August. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, did that answer your your question?
It does, although if 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 you and Araceli could just talk a little bit more about the uh the contractual obligations that first that first jump from twenty-seven to thirty-nine, and I I I note that you even have the thirty-nine, you know, in a box there, so highlighted. But if you could just talk just a, maybe just talk me through just a little bit more, maybe that that first one, I know you just went over it, but just one more time, that first one and the second one again.
Sure. So the be, what we did is the um, the contractual obligations is our personal costs. You know, what it costs to fund our personal costs in uh the number from June twenty twenty-six, uh sorry, from June twenty twenty-three, um, we had brought uh this discussion to the board saying, hey, you know, our vacancy rate has we had budgeted twenty twenty-three with a vacancy rate of fifteen percent. Uh, but our actuals through all of twenty twenty-three, now that it's over, was hovering really more around eight percent. So that initial uh twenty-six dollars, and really in August, it was only a dollar more, was to reduce the vacancy rate to actual uh not use the fifteen percent, but use the eight percent, as well as get rid of our hiring freeze. Uh, so to account for that, you know, that increase in expenditures, that this is where this bucket comes from. What I've done in twenty for twenty twenty-five is we've taken the same, the same, your personal cost, what it was in August of twenty twenty-three, what it's going to be in uh by twenty twenty-five, and that growth is the thirty-nine dollars, right, or personal expenses as I uh presented in my budget are only going up with the mayor increases, the increase in healthcare rates, uh we're continuing to make the assumption that it's around eight percent. Um, so it's really just the the growth in our personal costs that's driving the change in the fees for this component.
I just want to emphasize how sensitive these numbers are. So you saw we went from a hundred and three to a hundred and fourteen, and that was really based on a two million dollar change in the revenue projection. So two million dollars translates to an eleven dollar change in the per licensee fee assessment. So here, even though it looks like a very big jump from twenty-seven to thirty-nine, you're talking about no more than a three million dollar change. And remember that every year pursuant to our contractual obligations, all staff, union staff that are not at the top of their range are guaranteed to get their five percent step increase. So just that alone helps you understand how this is just continues to escalate. And although the number looks big, we're not actually talking about that many millions of 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 dollars here uh that it's accounting for.
I wonder, uh, Luisa and Leah, if it would be um uh just for the slave offices, if it would also just be helpful to show what the number would be in twenty twenty-four. So there's a, so you're, it doesn't look like it's that huge of a jump.
Okay, certainly when we uh we can take that direction for preparation of the report itself.
Yeah, I would, I might do that for, yeah, just this page in in general. For those line items.
Trustee Tony?
Thank you. Um, if we were to get the hundred and fourteen, um, I know that's one of the, only one of the options that's been uh presented and discussed today. Um, would we, would that number allow us to retain the current um balance we have, or does it deplete the balance?
You mean the reserve balance?
Yes, please. That's what I meant.
We would retain it.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Um, I I I'm gonna make a suggestion, and this is a suggestion that's based upon the conversation we had at the trustee meeting in January. And it's based upon the comments of trustee Huzer and trustee Trejo um who indicated that um when you're running a deficit, um, you also need to look at cost cutting. And I I um And I I um I would think that for the twenty twenty five, it's worth showing what the consequences are or the scenarios are if there is no rate increase. And not that that's a proposal, but it's more of a consequence. So if there's no rate increase, here are the um scenario. If we went full steam and didn't cut any personnel, we'd run out of money in October of the year. And then nobody would be being paid salaries. Or we can um, you know, or we would in January of twenty twenty five in order to run a budget, this is how many staff would need to be laid off because that would be the consequence. This is not threatening to do something, but this is letting legislators know what the consequences of their votes mean. I think that's I think that's uh justifiable. And I would encourage even something that was as detailed as this many from this department, this many from this department, this many from this department, to really give the legislators a visceral sense of what happens and what will happen if um there is no fee increase. Those are my thoughts. I think that should be part of the April report.
Great.
Trustee Shelby? Looks like, nope, not able to take it off off mute. Okay, well, we'll we'll come back to you. Um any other questions or comments up to this point? Oh, I think we might have tr- trustee Shelby now.
Yes, I um I like that. I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the conversation, but I do like the inclusion of twenty twenty four. Um and I actually like the language, you know, trustee Tony said consequence. I just think reality is important, right? I mean, when we are talking about the things that we have done and the and I know that the team has been very focused in terms of educating and as a, I should say, as a legislative liaison, I am well aware of the education that has transpired. And we know that there is um an appetite in the assembly as they run point this year as it relates to a fee increase. But I think the the reality of what will need to trans- transpire, I think we have in the past really just done what we've needed to do, but it's understanding the the significant budget deficit in the state of California. I think we also have to articulate for the legislative body exactly what it means to not continue to be fully funded in the way that we need to be funded. And so I guess that was more of a comment rather than a question.
No, it's their points well taken. In fact, um you know, the structure of the reports as outlined in the statute, the they we are directly asked to talk about consequences and really to talk about um the funding request in an incremental way to say, you know, if we didn't get this amount, this would happen. If we didn't get this, this would happen. So definitely, um again, I hear what you're saying. We we will do that. At this point, we've been very focused on trying to finalize the numbers. And then we will move to messaging and framing.
And then my question was around um what George presented as it related to the diversion. What does that reflect? And maybe I missed that because I'm, you know, I I I am structurally challenged today. But what does that reflect in terms of the legislative uh the fee increase? Particularly as it relates to how to implement? I guess what I'm trying to figure out is with the diversion piece. My questions earlier were what were the costs associated with each option? And then we learned that there was a pilot program um that was currently underway. And then my follow up question to that was around how to implement if the corresponding fee increase was not granted. So I guess this follow up to that is what in fact is the corresponding fee increases? It relates to the diversion program as we've identified that option two is that on both pieces is what the board is feeling the most comfortable with.
The next um set of slides we're going to go through is the expanding impact section of the fee increase request. And that's where you're going to see diversion. And I'll be able to respond to that then.
Okay, so divert just from a clarification standpoint, diversion is not included in this one fourteen that sits in front of us.
No, this is just like contractual obligations, healthcare costs, the lease, this P T O sick leave accrual, just kind of the standard operating way that we're doing business now, not adding or expanding new programming.
Okay, thank you.
Right, uh trustee Huser.
What are the headcount increases anticipated in this twenty twenty five number?
There's no headcount um in twenty twenty five. We had a headcount increase in twenty twenty four, I believe, of four F T Es in your twenty twenty four budget. And growing at beyond that, there's no headcount increase.
Well, but does that include not filling the vacant spots?
This this reflects a vacancy rate of, I believe, seven and a half percent or our salary or eight percent. Uh so we do have a vacancy rate built in. It doesn't assume all of our positions are filled, but it's not as high as we budgeted for twenty twenty three of fifteen percent vacancy rate.
Thank you.
Trustee Sol.
Yeah, Mr. Tre, I think I'm gonna hold my question because I think it it uh it it would be better served after Leah goes through the expanding uh sort of core operations part of this.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions up to this point on what we've talked about, keeping in mind that we do have significant other slides to talk about um just as far as expanding operations, et cetera? Anything else? All right, I think we can go on to the next.
All right, so Luisa, if you can advance it. So expanding impact, um we have one sort of historical reference point here as opposed to two with uh core operate sustaining corporations. In June of twenty twenty three, we I we identified an expanding impact funding need of thirty dollars per active licensee. So just a reference point for you. Now you can go forward. In January, we presented a number of areas for a potential inclusion in this component of the fee increase request. And now what we've done is we've costed them out. And we've begun to do a little bit of this framing um that we were just talking about needing to do uh with reference to sustaining corporations. So here, the attorney representation pilot, again, as a reminder, this would fund one of the key recommendations that came out of the Robertson report, the analysis of things the state bar could do to mitigate racial disparities in the attorney discipline system. This pilot would fund appointed counsel for a relatively small number of respondents. So you see, we've costed that out a dollar twenty five per active licensee. And this would be a one time funding request as a pilot. All kinds of discussion to be have to be had about viability and sustainability. But as it's structured now, one time, we can move forward. The complaint review unit, uh this is uh Aline, I think you're gonna cover this side quickly.
Yes, yeah, good morning, everybody. I'll try to be quick. Um you know, three dollars and twenty five cents per active licensee or around six hundred and eighty two thousand dollars is being requested to adequately um staff the complaint review unit. For those of you that may not have familiarity with the program, complaint review unit currently resides with Office of General Counsel. It functions it functions as an independent second look of the complaints that are closed by Office of Chief Trial Counsel. In other words, if a complaint is filed with O C T C that's later closed, that complaining witness has an opportunity to request a second look into that complaint. Um the currently, there is no sufficient resources and staffing for crew to function effectively and without in increasing the backlog. In the last five years, crew met a hundred percent of its clearance rate only four times. Um we have um we we receive about three hundred and sixty seven year requests per per quarter, monthly, you know, in monk monthly volume is about hundred and twenty two requests. And we do not have the current staffing to even meet the hundred percent uh clearance rate. As a result, our backlog has increased over twelve hundred thousand requests as of now. We also are um not doing so great with respect to the disposition time. Uh right now, requests are running on average of ten to eleven months. And so the requested funding is really to stabilize that program, ensure that we have hundred percent clearance rate of the requests that are coming through and to improve overall disposition time. Uh we also foresee that some impact could be made to the backlog of cases. However, additionally, one time funding funding is necessary for the backlog reduction. We are doing some analysis right now to determine what that amount may be and 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 provide a proposal to address that backlog. Um unless um board has any questions. Um at the end of the presentation, you will see our most recent um crew dashboard presentation, which includes the numbers that I quickly went over during our presentation right now.
Okay.
Okay, doesn't look like there's any questions, so let's keep going.
All right, so that's Luisa. So the client.
I had one quick question. Is it it was that an amount over and above the one fourteen and we're included in?
No, all of this we're talking about is over and above. And at the end of this section, there's a a couple of spreadsheets that are gonna help put this all together. So this is the Client Trust Account Protection Program. You all know that absent any new resources, we did implement what I would call phase one of the program. And this was one of the key initiatives that the board uh launched really in response to the Girardi uh situation is to require all attorneys in the scene to register their client trust accounts and to affirm compliance with various um related rules of professional conduct. This requested funding here would allow us to expand the program to reflect its original intended design, which was to include not just registration of trust accounts, but also compliance reviews in a smaller at number of regulatory audits. So the cost of this program, if levied on all licensees, is eight dollars and seventy five cents. You see here a reference in the slide to the cost per licensee. If it was only levied on those with client trust accounts, which we estimated a little over um half of active licensees, I believe. Um but that cost would be seventeen seventy five uh per licensee if only levied on those with client trust accounts. So this is the Client Trust Account uh Protection Program. Diversion, George.
So this is the estimated cost of all three prongs of the diversion program that I talked about. So the one component, that's the fee arbitration improvements, um including a mediation program. Um the second of which is the pre complaint diversion in the Office of Public Trust Liaison. And the third of which is the um post complaint diversion in O C T C. And you can see the cost there, um one point three million, which four hundred and twenty thousand is for a limited term, three years, I believe. And Leah, correct me, but I believe that's the fee arbitration piece.
That's correct.
Um or six fifty per active licensee for three years and four fifty thereafter. So the piece thereafter would be the extra staffing for um the Office of Public Trust Liaison and O C T C um and the small component. Um obviously, I've already talked about what the funding would be for and what it's supposed to do. Um if we don't get the funding, we'll continue to use our existing resources to staff our kind of pilot diversion program, but that will limit its reach. Um the other two programs wouldn't be able to meaningfully launch or expand. And so the overall numbers of cases diverted would be reduced, um which would limit the intended effect, which is to take those cases out and allow us to focus on more serious disciplinary matters.
And just to um say a little bit about the one time funding for mandatory fee arbitration. The mediation model that's being looked at is one in place in the Los Angeles Superior Court. There's small claims uh division, which uses um a combination of uh an online platform and a mediation firm to run mediation for, you know, tons of thousands of small claims matters each year. Very good customer feedback and also uh feedback from the court itself about this program. So that is the one uh time cost is sort of getting that infrastructure up in place and mandatory fear. That particular aspect of this request does not include additional state bar staffing. So that's a cost here. We'll go on to elimination of bias. This um this is something that uh we do want to discuss with you either now or when we move into the uh discussion portion of this um of this item. Elimination of bias is currently a voluntary fee. We are requesting that the voluntary fee of two dollars be made mandatory. Currently, about seventy percent of licensees pay this fee. So to construe this as a fee increase of two dollars is inaccurate and perhaps unhelpful to us uh because it is a conversion of a voluntary fee to a mandatory one. That would result in about a hundred and forty four thousand dollars additional per year. That's the delta that we're looking for. And this would fund a host of our elimination of bias D E I related work. And those of you that have been on the board know for a while, know that every other year, we are required statutorily to report in our work and our progress on achieving various elimination of bias related goals. This would provide us with a stable and secure funding source to achieve that result. Um but it is a slightly different posture here because it is not a new fee. Uh it's a conversion from voluntary to mandatory. Next one, I T. Steve, this is a new one you've not yet seen, and you're gonna hear some numbers now and go all off your chairs.
Yeah, there um there's no number here. I apologize, we just got these numbers finalized on Friday. Um so the amount needed for I T is estimated at about sixteen point six million dollars, which equates to seventy nine dollar and twenty five cents um active fee. But a a portion of that is ongoing and a portion of that is only uh one time. The ongoing component is about three point six million uh dollars or seventeen dollar and twenty five cents uh active fee. And that would include a significant expansion in the number of I T uh positions um going up uh from about forty four to sixty four, uh so twenty new F T E and ongoing licensing and maintenance for several new systems that we're proposing. The remainder thirteen million dollars or about sixty two dollar active uh fee um is for uh special projects and system design and implementations. The vast uh majority of that would be for a new attorney information regulation system. Uh that is the main system that we use to manage all licensee records. Uh we had intended to do this upgrade a few years ago, but the cost far exceeded uh the original estimate. So we have made several improvements around the margins of related systems in time. Uh but the time really has come to move forward with a a major system uh upgrade. This is still a kind of a green screen uh system, and um it really hampers us to not have a an updated, more modern version. So in terms of how we got these numbers, we've been working with an I T consulting firm over the past several months uh doing a real deep dive, a review of the I T organization, um looking at organizational structure, systems and processes, uh staffing and uh technology. So the costs presented here reflect this firm's recommendations for what we need uh to do in all of these areas to have the I T organization that supports the bar's uh mission going forward. I think we really are in this, I think, agreement uh throughout the bar that we are at an inflection point now with I T with almost everything that the bar is currently doing or wants to do in the future, uh dependent uh directly or indirectly on modern I T systems. If we fall behind in technology, it is going to significantly hamper our existing core mission critical activities and new initiatives. Uh one note, we just got these numbers, as I said, on Friday. They are being now reviewed by an independent third party expert who has many, many years of I T consulting and project management experience for state of California uh government agencies. We've also asked the California Department of Technology to review. They are going to let us know if they have the resources to do this on our uh very compressed uh timeframe. But it is all being looked at uh now, so it is it may change a little bit um as we prepare for the final reports uh in April.
Trustee Tony?
Thank you. Um, I'll tell you what I think would be helpful to making the case here. Right now, under why do we need additional money and what the impact will be. The sentence that describes seems to be why we need more money. What's missing is what's the positive impact of this? Maybe you, you can make that a separate bullet point. And really help people understand what this will give us. That we don't have now. I think that's important to, to be really clear about that. I actually don't see it in here.
Good feedback, thank you. All right, trustee Huser.
I have to be honest, I feel a little bit like we're boiling the frog here and that we're not seeing the full picture. Um, you know, we've just approved a big budget and then we were looking at the one fourteen and now we're looking at all these. Incremental pieces and then we were looking at how to structure the fee increases among different groups and I'm. I'm struggling to see the full picture in one place and I'm creating charts for myself and that kind of thing, but I think it would be useful. Um, to have, I don't know if you have it already, just in one place. You know, what is everything that we're asking for? So we can see what that looks like to the people who were asking to pay these fee increases, because I assume that's how we're paying for this, so. Um, it, it's getting high in my mind and, and I'm struggling to see the whole picture.
So Luisa, maybe you can just scroll forward um to the table. No, yeah, so. The expanding impact table um here, so we haven't gone through all of these, but just if this is helpful. So you can see that without IT, which has a TBD there. We are at forty nine fifty per active licensee for twenty twenty five, sixty seven um twenty twenty six. And eighty five point seventy five, eighty five dollars and seventy five cents twenty twenty seven. And there's some notes here about what's one time, what's being split over, over three years and is one time. And what is being split over multiple years but is cumulative in nature, and that is the OCTC piece. We haven't gotten to it yet. So that's, that's this piece. And again, Steve just gave us a rather big number, I think seventy nine fifty, maybe seventy nine. One time for IT that's not included. So now if you go forward, Luisa. But you can see here, I think this is what you're asking for. We are at a hundred and sixty three fifty with no IT. And in uh that, next couple of slides, and we can skip to this now, but we are asking, is this amount too high? And if so, should we start identifying areas to reduce or eliminate? And getting into this conversation about how to structure the fees. So I, it is all coming and we can jump into it right now. But we, we did have a couple of other areas. I think it's important that we at least go through OCTC. Um, and then, you know, maybe just dive right into this piece, but it is here.
Okay, yes, trustee Shelby.
I um, you know, I, I appreciate um. Trustee Huser's comments, because I'm getting a little confused in all of this and, you know. I, I'm not an attorney, so I say this respectfully. I would say let's just go for all of it, right? Because it doesn't, doesn't impact me, but as I think about it and I think about the challenges. What I do know is the legislative process and I, and I understand the multiplicity of things that are sitting on their laps. And so one of the things that I was just sitting here in, and let me say this. Certainly appreciate all of the time and effort that has gone into educating us, because I think this is critical and important. But I think we've gotta really just sort of get to brass hats. Um, and if there was a way of. Putting this in a simple document. And again, with just my public affairs background, the way that I'm thinking about this is what we have, what we need and what we can live with. Because I don't think we'll have the benefit of. With all that the legislature has to deal with. And even their staff, of really be able to walk them through in-depth of all of what our needs are. And I think we've gotta get really clear, you know, we know what we have. We know what we need, but we need to get real clear on what it is that we can live with to understand that we're looking at a hundred and fourteen. In operations and another forty nine, and that we're not really clear on what the technology piece is. But we know that there have been some, I'm trying to say this the right way, but we know that there are some potential risks as it relates to technology. We should have full clarity in terms of what that overall number looks like. Um, and so I think something, a docu- one-page document that just sort of articulates that. Would be helpful, um, because I don't know if we're gonna have the opportunity to really get into the weeds for the people who are ultimately going to make the decision. Thank you.
I, I wholeheartedly agree, and I think the Board could decide today. We should have um a request that includes sustaining cooperations, OCTC and IT. That's it. You could say we want no more um than a hundred and fifty dollar total fee increase request. So I, I think we are, you know, what, what we've done is we've identified costs. Um, associated with each of the areas that have come up previously as priority uh areas for investment. And so now it's time, I think, to make those kinds of decisions and give us that direction as we pull together the final report. Because these numbers are very high. To me, I'm not comfortable. I would not support putting forward a request this high. But this is kind of how we're making, you know, we're making the sausage right now. And so, um, so we need that kind of input. So if I could just kind of quickly get through this. Allow Eween to give you an overview of the case processing standards piece, because this is really important to. Tea up the conversation about OCTC needs. And then we could just go into prioritization, how we wanna get to finalizing what we're actually gonna ask for, so.
And let, and let me just interject. I appreciate that, Leah, and I hear exactly what you're saying. I guess my challenge is. I don't have anything in front of me that allows me to see the totality of what our priorities and our needs are. And so maybe that's the document that is coming, but my concern is that. I, I'm a visual learner, and so if I had a document sitting in front of me that outlined. In one page, everything as it relates to the priorities and, and. You know, uh, and, and I wanna say this, and I say this respectfully to the leadership team. I understand that as a board, we are focused on governance and policy. But you all have the benefit of seeing this from day to day. So as you raise the priorities, then we need to make the tough decisions in terms of what it is we're going to embrace as a board. And right now for me, I'm seeing that there is the one priority of the operations, but there are these expanded priorities. And I understand everything is a priority, but again, for me, what we have, what we need and what we can live with. That's sort of the prism of which I'm thinking through this.
Okay, I would just suggest that what we at need at this juncture is the sustaining cooperations. That's one fourteen. I think there's some flexibility there with respect to the PTO accruals potentially, but that is what we need. And what we want is expanding impact. So I think that's a safe way to look at it. Everything under expanding impact is truly expanding our impact. And so if we don't get any of it, we are not gonna need to lay off staff. We're not gonna need to default on our lease, none of that. So just in terms of a very high-level frame, what we need is the one fourteen. What we want is all this other stuff that you can see is getting us to forty nine fifty now without the IT piece. Which has come in with a number that we would all agree is not viable. So that's kind of, you know, where we are hot off the presses today.
Good, trustee Shelby. Great. Uh, yes, trustee Huser.
Just very quickly, that was extraordinarily helpful framing um that last that we need the one fourteen and the rest of this is. A little bit more discretionary. Obviously, there's a need for this stuff too, but. Um, that was extraordinarily helpful. What I would also like to see, and maybe somebody can throw it together while we're going through the rest of this. Is what is then the total fee increase and what, what are various groups of lawyers going to be expected to pay? Um, in total, where we are now, what we're adding. But we may discretionarily add, because I think that amount, when it gets out to actual human beings paying it, it's also relevant. So I'd love to see that.
Okay. I've just asked Justin to work on that. Um, so again, continuing with the what we want, um. This trustee Tony is in response to your request. We have costed out a resumption of in-person meetings. This is in-person meetings for all sub-entities and the Board that are in the general fund, so it's not just the Board. And this amount does include a, a, a one-time cost that should have been made clear. For uh upgrading our San Francisco space so that we can hold meetings here. If we do resume meetings in person, they will need to be both in LA and San Francisco. And so there's some language here about what we're doing currently with sub-entities meeting uh two times a year in person, the Board for. That's what we're currently budgeted for, and then what the impact would be of transitioning back. Um, and, you know, we did this very last minute, so there's some cleanup that needs to be done to back out. Costs that are already budgeted in twenty twenty five. Um, that's this item. Think we can move forward. The Jenny Commission, this is one we've discussed on a number of occasions. Um, you can see here the full cost for the state bar to operate the Jenny Commission, one point two million dollars a year. Or five seventy five per active licensee. We can move forward, Luisa. OCTC, okay, I'm gonna turn things over to Eween. Eween, George and I thought it would make sense for her to go over the case processing standards report. That again is a companion report to the fee increase request. And then we'll turn it back to George to walk through what exactly the OCTC component of our expanding impact request is. So, Eween, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Uh, this presentation will focus on OCTC's performance and OCTC's staffing needs and analysis. So, uh, the three questions we will raise for your feedback and input at the end of the presentation, I wanna highlight them here. So when I go through the slides, you can think about uh those three questions. First, what staffing increase should we request? Again, just for OCTC. Uh, should we consider a phased staffing request? If phased, how should that request be uh structured? So the discussion will cover three parts. The first part is SB forty's requirement. On update on OCTC's most recent performance. The second one is staffing needs analysis. The third one is we had a deep look at the OCTC workforce. And we think about what factors could impact our fee, uh, OCTC fee uh request. Then, uh, in SB forty, they specifically asked to uh for an update on the changes made to case disciplinary processes. And the assessment of those, uh, the impact of those changes. They also asked for a discussion, uh, how efficiency concerns were addressed uh by the state bar. Uh, which was, which were raised by the state auditor and the LAO office. So I will quickly go through the changes that have been made by OCTC. George provided a list of fifty-two programs that have been implemented since year twenty twenty. And you can see the spread out of those programs. The reason I want to spread them out is to give everybody a sense that some programs that they just uh recently implemented. For example, we are, we don't know the uh short-term and the long-term impact of some of the programs yet. Another point I really wanna make is even there are fifty, there are fifty-two programs implemented. Uh, but they vary in size, complexity and the impact. They are categorized in four areas, organizational policy uh slash procedure, technology and the staffing. Some of the programs, programs may have negative impact on efficiency, on how, how fast the cases can be processed. For, for example, conflict of interest check. It's intended to protect the public. However, to implement this procedure and the policy that requires staff's additional time. I, I hear my own echo. Um, that requires staff's additional time to fill out the form, upload the document. Uh, so just to give uh everybody a sense, some programs could delay the pro- uh, the case processing. Uh, then, um, I'm not gonna go to the specific changes that have been made. You, you can uh see the report for some details. Uh, but I want um talk about the impact of those changes. We have two major uh indicators for impact. One is called productivity. Which is operationalized as the case is closed per year. I want draw your attention to this number. So in twenty twenty-three, the case is closed by OCTC. Uh, is comparable to twenty eighteen, pre-pandemic level. It went up and down, but mostly stable. So it's fair to say that uh in the past six years, the productivity remained stable. Then another thing is case processing speed, whether we have processed cases faster or slower. Then um in intake, cases closest to intake, we had uh eighteen percent, this should be switched. We has eighteen percent decrease uh in, in time, which is good. We, we processed uh cases closing intake faster. In investigation, we had a eight percent decrease, which is also good. Then in charging, which um comprised four percent of total cases. We had a significant time increase, which is not good. We want process uh cases faster. So that's the overall picture of uh OCTC's uh performance. Then SB forty, the legislature wanted to see how uh is the current speed um compared against the SB to eleven standards. So this is the current speed by stage, thirty-seven average days for cases closed in intake. The standard set in SB two eleven proposal is thirty days. Uh, some gaps, but not far. Uh, investigation to ten is the current speed. At, on average, uh, staff spend two hundred and ten days. Uh, the target speed is one eighty. Uh, then charging, you can see it's a big gap there. But again, I want to give you the full picture. Those two stages, uh, they comprised ninety-six percent of cases. So the dominant majority of cases, they were processed faster. Then, um, another um uh way to look at the OCTC performance relatively to the standard is to look at the six. Categories which we proposed in SB two eleven proposal. And uh, uh, you can see, again, we look at the intake, you can look at different categories in investigation. The gap between the current speed and the target speed, and again, uh, charging. We, we almost need to double the speed in charging to meet the standard. Uh, then SB forty also required us to report hearing time, which took place in a uh state bar court. Uh, uh, overall picture is. In the past sixty, over the past six years, the number of cases uh had, that were processed in hearing uh has decreased. Uh, but the speed that went, went through hearing also decreased. Uh, the, the, the speed um was improved, meaning the days were decreased, which is good. So it used to be one ninety-one days for cases went through hearing or closed in hearing. Now it's one hundred seventy-seven days, which is, which is the time spent in a state bar court. However, if you look at the cases uh from when they were open in OCTC. To uh when they were closed or pro- or processed in hearing. It's, it's significantly increased, and we know the reason, because the charging uh has slowed down. Then another way to look at OCTC performance against the SB to eleven standards is the backlog. And uh, the, in SB to eleven standards, we propose ten percent of backlog, backlog standard. We, we propose that no more than ten percent of cases, no matter which category they were in. Uh, go, go beyond the proposed backlog timeline. Uh, the, we, the current, the current uh performance is twenty-seven percent of cases, closed cases were in backlog. were in backlog status, not ideal, but still comparable to previous years. Twenty-seven, so went up and down twenty-seven percent again. Now, pending is, in my opinion, is the most troublesome picture here. Pending backlog is the cases that are still pending, but they are already in backlog status. Thirty-six percent in year 2023, that were in backlog stand, status in pending inventory. Only twenty-one percent in 2018. So the overall picture is that we made some progress in terms of closing cases in intake and investigation. Productivity-wise, we remain the, remain stable. However, the older cases in pending backlog keeps accumulating, and that's related with the staffing request we are gonna make. So staffing needs analysis, we use two methodologies, and they were both introduced and proposed in the SB to eleven standards. The first methodology, we call that linear model. We request forty-eight FTEs. For for what goal? The goal is to meet the SB to eleven standards, average case processing standards and the closed backlog standards. Then we look at the pending, because even we can meet the SB to eleven standards, we have those cases keep accumulating in the pending backlog. It used to be one thousand cases here in 2018, now twenty-five hundred, two-point-five times more than what were in backlog in 2018, impending inventory. And percentage-wise, again, you have seen this number. So to ask for staff members forty-eight is to meet the standards. Then we asked additional twenty-seven to reduce this pending backlog back to twenty percent goal. So we we're saying if we want to reduce the pending backlog from thirty-seven percent to twenty percent in five years, we need a twenty-seven additional staff members. So twenty-seven plus forty-eight here, which is seventy-five FTE in OCTC to reach those two goals. Then another methodology I mentioned is called workload and time study. Basically, the methodology is to have the random moment survey. Give that to staff members and collect the time they spend on the milestone tasks, important tasks, and we collect that time. We present that time to to staff members and ask them, how much do they want adjust to reach the goal of having a healthy and manageable workload? And the staff members propose twenty-five percent adjustment, which means we need to ask for seventy-seven additional FTE. So the two methodologies, one is seventy-five, this one we ask for seventy-seven, pretty close. We also look at some other factors to truly understand how we, when we ask for this staffing request, how should we structure them? One thing, the overall picture is in 2018, we had filled position two thirty. In 2023, we had two eighty-nine. We had fifty-nine additional FTE in OCTC. But if you recall, productivity over the past six years remained stable. If you recall the time, we improved the time for investigate, for intake and the investigation closed cases. So that's, that's the historical trend. We also look at how long did we take to even, you know, fill those positions? And we look at how long OCTC attorneys and investigators stay in the state bar. And the picture is the majority, which is here, which is seventy-seven percent of attorneys, they have less than ten, less than six years of tenure in the state bar. So they, they are, they are relatively inexperienced workforce here. Then investigators, which is also the majority, sixty-three percent of investigators have less than six years experience. Then we look at the turnover rate, which we have already discussed a bit in in the previous presentation. Now, George will discuss with you what kind of staff you increase would make sense, and George, please take over.
Sure. So if you look at the two staffing needs analysis, they basically come out in essentially the same place, roughly a total of seventy-five to seventy-seven positions to both try and meet the SB to eleven standards and to reduce our pending inventory. That's a huge number of people. And I think it highly unlikely would get those all at once for a number of reasons. But among the number of reasons is that one of the things that the legislature asked us to do in this was to look at procedural and operational changes so we could get a sense of have those actually improved efficiency. We made a large number of changes this last year, and particularly, we did a significant reorganization of OCTC to try and address some efficiency concerns that were raised by the Legislative Analyst's Office. In particular, to differentiate amongst amongst types of cases and the teams that we have handling those types of cases to try and make it more efficient. We obviously don't see the results of that yet because we just started that in July of 2023. So we just don't have data on that. So this then raises the question, A, we could never hire and absorb seventy-seven positions in one year. B, it's unclear that that would make sense because hopefully we will have some efficiencies that might change that number if we look at the data in future years to take account of our efficiency improvements. And so the next question, should we consider a phased staffing request? Our recommendation is yes, to address all of those concerns. And in particular, if we are going to request between seventy-five and seventy-seven positions, my strong suggestion would be that that be phased and that that be over some period of time, potentially three years, an annual increment of twenty-five positions each year, which has a number of benefits. A, that's a number of staff that we could realistically try to hire and absorb in a given year. But I think it's important to remember that the impacts of those staff, additional staff, will not be fully felt in that first year because there is a significant training and experience component before someone gets to the position where they can fully contribute to OCTC's mission. So basically, we we account for essentially a three-month training period when people are not really contributing that much in terms of productivity, six months in which they're reduced productivity. By the end of the first year, we hope that they're starting to get up to being fully productive, but realistically, it's somewhere between one and a half to three years before someone is sufficiently familiar with the subject area and the procedures to be a fully effective staff member. So breaking into three increments would give us a number of advantages. One, it would allow us to hire. Two, it would allow us each year then to look back at what that additional staffing has accomplished over the last year, what our additional efficiency improvements have accomplished. For example, implementation of the diversion program, the implementation of the reorganization, and come back with data that might conceivably suggest that, you know, we don't need the full amount of the second tier, or we don't need the full amount of the third tier, depending upon what the data shows as we continue to move forward. So for all those reasons, the recommendation would be that we do do a phased request and that we request that there be essentially, in connection with each of the next phases, a subsequent review of the data with potentially a subsequent adjustment and/or an explanation of why that data continues to suggest that we need the additional phases of staffing.
Are we open to questions now? I see trustee trustee Huser has a question.
I can wait if you're not done. Go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, we are done. This is our last slide.
Okay, well, then my question is, I mean, I find these numbers, I just have to be honest, as a, I manage a global litigation program with thousands of cases on the docket. They range everything from small claims to giant matters in a company that has a lot of funds, and so I'm not worried about funding and operating at a deficit. We have six lawyers and eight staff. And we get through these matters. So to see these numbers, to me, is shocking. To to request an additional seventy-seven people to have numbers, I can't remember what they were, just having seen the slide for a moment of several hundred is shocking to me. And so I wonder what, I know you all are coming into this, you come in midstream, you've got the backlog, all of this, no one's to blame for that. But what are we doing to make sure we can do something differently? Because in my mind, we cannot afford, because we don't have the money for it, you can only spend what you have, can't afford to be adding dozens and dozens of of staff. But yet, I understand your problem in terms of you've got this backlog, but what are we doing to to assess how we handle these cases, or whether we just deal with some of them, you know, like you talked about earlier, the diversion program or that kind of thing? I'm just, I I'm shocked by these numbers.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's a much lengthier discussion in terms of kind of how we handle the cases, what we do with the cases, and what we've done to try and speed that up. I mean, we have made a number of changes. As I mentioned, we did this significant reorganization in July to try and based on some recommendations from Legislative Analyst's Office, address some of the efficiency concerns. You know, the secondary component is that, you know, there are some things that we are required to do with respect to each and every case that take large amounts of time for each case. So for example, for each and every case, even if it's a very minor allegation of misconduct, we have to draft a closing letter that explains what the allegations were, why we have decided to close those sufficiently thorough that that provides a record to enable if they to seek review either in crew or in the Supreme Court, that there's a basis for the court to conclude that we appropriately closed that. And so we have to do that in each and every one of the cases that we handle every year, and that takes an inordinate amount of time. Are there efficiencies that we could do to do that? You know, we've done various things to try and do that. So for example, we recently revised and came up with a new list of standard form closing language to try and address many of the more similar complaints that we get. That's now in place. Do we know how that's going to impact us going forward? No, because we just put that in place. So it's kind of this constant, we're constantly looking at what we do and trying to make adjustments to try and do it more efficiently and more effectively. But I will say, you know, there have been other workload studies in the past that also suggested the need for additional resources along these lines, and they weren't granted. And I think that's in part what we see over the last six years of the inventory increasing. Because we can try and make it as efficient as we want, but at the same time, we're tasked with, you know, being, making sure that we are thorough and complete in each and every investigation so that we never have another Gerardi again. And those are intention. And, you know, the diversionist program is an effort to address that in a way. The reorganization is an effort to address that in a way. But to a large extent, we're nibbling around the edges in terms of getting that down. So we, to go back to the language that trustee Shelby said, you know, need, have, want. You know, we could muddle along with what we've got, but I would expect that if we muddle along with what we've got right now, you're going to see the inventory continue to increase, and we'll try to keep the case processing times the same, but potentially they might increase. With with some increase in staffing, we might be able to bring down one or the other. But, you know, those are kinds of choices. Not sure that really answers your question, but I think that's probably the best I can do right now without kind of going into a much more thorough analysis of what we do and how.
Yeah, it does. It does respond to my question, and I appreciate the pickle that you're in. That said, I think we have to figure out how we can do something, and that may involve asking the legislature to do something. Not every case is a Gerardi. We don't have to treat everyone with a scorched earth mentality if it means that we can't get the work done on on the volume. So there's, I appreciate the situation you're in, but I think just personally adding at that level of headcount is not the answer.
All right. Before we get to other comments, I do want to do a time check here. It's twelve forty-seven. We're budgeted to go through one PM. Understand that everybody has schedules to adhere to. Leah, just to kind of give us an idea of what we still need to discuss, can you just tell us what's left on the agenda just for this item? And then we can have a discussion as a board on whether we continue later on past one o'clock today or continue this, this meeting until, you know, the time that works for for everybody or a majority of of everybody.
So we are slated after this slide is the table that I showed earlier that outlines the total dollar amounts for each of the components of the expanding impact and then the grand total. We have staff who's worked up, you know, your request for the total total, so we'll have that amount. We need to make some, we really need to get board direction on what the ultimate component should be of this request. Basically, what should we strike and eliminate at this point? Don't continue working it up, right? Because the number is just too big. So there's that. And then there's the whole conversation about how to structure the licensing fee itself. Trustee Huser referred to that, but we have options for what I would call progressive fee structures, practice sector-based, income-based, years of practice-based. We sent out a survey last week to our licensees. We have about nine thousand responses. So we do have a little bit of input from attorneys, and we have some models to show you about what what that would look like. So so we need you guys to give us direction on what's in and what's out, as well as the structure for assessing the fees that we're gonna recommend, understanding we could recommend more than one if that's the direction of the board. So those are kind of the two big conversation pieces to be had.
So it sounds like we potentially could go another hour with these discussion items. I just want to get a show of hands. Are you able to stay an extra hour? Okay, who is not able to do an extra hour? Let's do it that way. It's got trustee Stevens is unable to see trustee Trejo, potentially trustee Shelby, trustee Huser, trustee Buenaventura. Okay, so that's a significant, oh, and trustee Good, I think. So it's a significant majority.
So if we're gonna try to continue, I, you know, we have the GC here and our board secretary, we can try this model where we don't have to wait ten days. We could kind of figure out what the board's availability is now and continue the meeting, maybe set a one-hour conversation. I think this has been, you know, you you're really ready probably to get into the discussion. We can, in that time, do the one pager that trustee Shelby has requested, put up the totals, and just like launch right into the conversation.
Right. So do we have some dates lined up that might work?
Did you have your hand up, trustee Shelby?
I, I, I did. I am. But you outlined kind of the next steps in a, in a very succinct way. I thought the conversation was great, but I didn't think, you know, I was under the impression that coming to this discussion, we were gonna get to some nitty-gritty. And so I want to make sure that the next time we get together, because it feels like there were a number of things that we were asked to respond to. I hope the materials are even more comprehensive and that we really give ourselves enough time to have this discussion because it really is an important one. And and so I'm hoping that all of the staff presentations have transpired and that the board finally gets an opportunity to have a conversation. Thank you.
So as far as the direction that you need, Leah, what is the kind of last possible moment for that to have transpired by?
I think it would be best from a staff perspective if we could try to find a time to continue this this week. Just given that we have to turn finals around for you for the March meeting. So I don't, I don't know the best way to do that. I don't know, Luisa, you have a great way, maybe voting options on through Outlook right now.
Um, yes, and we're looking at a meeting for this week, right?
And maybe we should schedule it for two hours. I don't think we need two hours, but that way we have enough time. Yeah.
So I'm wondering in the evening, would that be the most common, commonly available time slot? I know we try not to do that, but this with the interest of time. See trustee Shelby saying no, trustee Barahona is saying yes.
Let me ask this question um through the chair. Is this a conversation that we can have at our board meeting when we are sitting together in March? And is it a situation that? Because I feel like there's a piece that's missing here. I feel like the piece that's missing. Is the prioritization that comes from the senior leadership team. I understand that you all want us to make some decisions. But I feel like for myself, I need you all to make some of the tough sort of. The tough sort of operational decisions to say, okay, I've looked at my organization and this is what I can live with, this is what I cannot live with. And I feel like if that sort of conversation would transpire first, then I would certainly feel comfortable saying yay, nay, stay. But I I feel like for me, that's the piece that's missing.
Think um, I I think we have, we do, we have started to do that in subsequent slides, but we don't have time to get through them. And um I think waiting to the March meeting would be too late because we need you to approve the reports in March. Unless you want to try to have a special meeting after the March meeting to approve their reports, but they are due April first. And I believe your March meeting is the twenty first and twenty second. So there's just not a lot of time there on the backend. Um, so certainly for this continued discussion that we're talking about, we can be more upfront about staff recommendations. I think it would be, you know, very helpful for the board to set kind of a cap. And maybe you need that, um, you need us to give you the what must we have first before you can think about your cap number. So I think we can come with that in mind to the next meeting, but I I don't think unfortunately we can wait until the March meeting.
Trustee Tony.
Well, one quick comment. Um. You asked the question. Is this number too much? The bottom line, one sixty-three, whatever it was. I was going to ask the opposite question, is it enough? Because I noted that technology is not in there at all. It is excluded. So either technology is important or it's not. If it's important, it needs to be in there. That's my comment. Or else it should be taken out completely from the report.
All right, so definitely another thing to discuss. So.
Luisa, are you working on something here?
Yes, I'm putting together a quick poll Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Um, a few options for a meeting during the day and then also in the evening. For two hours. So uh if you just give me like two minutes, I'll have that prepared.
Would it be helpful during that two minutes to talk about anything in particular? I could, I could talk about maybe um responding to your comment, trustee Tony. I think it is both too much and I think we need to include IT. So I think it means some other areas are going to have to come out. And we will come back with clear staff recommendations. In this deck you have, I think we note, you know, some initial recommendations to remove Jenny. Convert the EOB fee, move it out of the fee increase discussion and move it over into a conversion to a mandatory fee. And then to eliminate the in-person meetings. We can go further there. Um, you you may have, like if I had to say today on the spot, I'd say OCTC and IT. And then our sustaining cooperations, and that's probably what I would say are must-dos. Um. So. That's where we are. And as Steve mentioned, we are having this IT request added by a third-party consultant. Um, that has worked with state government and state auditor in particular, so that will be very instructive uh what we get back on that.
Okay, so poll should be coming.
Trustee Barahona, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I was gonna say, would it be advantageous to um try to move the attorney representation pilot? Um, and get that sort of funded privately, like through a foundation? Or a a group of foundations and take that out entirely out of the expanding impact? I'm just curious if that would be advantageous to go to the legislature with and say, we wanted this and we actually are are getting it funded another way. And here are some interested parties. I think that's again our way to um. Uh, to bring additional revenue in and partnerships that would certainly get behind that.
I think it's a good idea. I don't know if by April first we can say we've gotten the commitment, but we can say that's the intent.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, this is Arnie. Uh, do we, do you need to get through the consent calendar today as well?
I would most likely trail to the next, to our continued meeting.
Okay.
Less staff unless we need to approve it to the, any item today.
George, no, no.
Okay, trustees, you should have received the poll. With um several options for a meeting.
All right, hopefully everybody's had a chance to fill that out.
I'm checking responses. And we do not have a quorum just yet. Believe we need one more response. Let's see. Did we lose Melanie? Oh, there you are.
Yeah, I think my only availability was Friday from eleven to one. That was it.
Okay.
Luisa, I'm gonna have to wait um for me to respond just because. There's some stuff that's fluid on my calendar that I know that I'm not completely up to speed on, so we can have to help me with that.
Okay.
I think in order for us to do this, we have to adjourn today to a specific date and time.
That's correct.
So Luisa, what is the, what's the one with the most, the closest to getting us a quorum? I think we'll have to pick that and hope that. It'll work.
Okay, looks like um. Let me just. March first from one to three.
So Brian, uh trustee Stallings, are you okay if we do the adjourning to that date and time? And then we will individually reach out to folks and maybe see if we can muster a quorum.
Yes, I am.
I moved to recess this meeting until March first at one o'clock.
Thank you for that motion. Trustee Tony, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my vice chair, Cisneros. I'm gonna have a roll call vote, please.
Barahona.
Hi.
Buonaventura.
Hi.
Chen. Not present. Cisneros.
Hi.
Good.
Hi.
Huser.
Hi.
Shelby.
Hi.
Stevens.
Hi.
Soell.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Trejo.
Hi.
Stallings.
Hi.
Eleven i's, zero n's, motion carries.
Chair, for just for clarification, that was motion to adjourn, correct, to the specified time and date?
It it was motion to recess to the time and date.
I'm so sorry to have not, I'm so sorry for not have heard that earlier, but I would. You know, it would be cleaner if we do a motion to adjourn. Yeah, but I think that, I think we could make the argument that has been done, at least in the spirit. Of the Bagley King Act. Okay.
All right, thanks, everybody. Bye.